Good evening, everybody. Would everybody please stand for opening prayer for Mr. Lesher, please?
For the prayer.
Stand there and we see everybody's chest.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. Mr. President. Would you join me in prayer? First of all, God, grant us safety in the midst of civic strife and pandemic. Keep us from harm by domestic terrorists and those who threaten or intimidate government officials, law enforcement, or other public safety personnel. Give us generous hearts to reconcile with our neighbors and those with whom we disagree. Search our hearts and stir us up in the midst and stir up in us the wisdom to obediently bend your will and love our neighbors as ourselves. Grant us peace again in our community and our nation. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. So let's follow this by the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag. By Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the free public for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great counsel. That's great counsel. I appreciate it. Great prayer, Mr. Lesher. Appreciate you put a lot of effort in that. That's great. Next thing on the agenda, counsel. We've got on the agenda, we've got January 12th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections on the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes. The minutes for November 17th, December 8th, December 15th. Councils had a chance to review the minutes on the 17th, the 8th, and the 15th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes to anybody? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted by unanimous consent. Next on the agenda is dispersments from the December 22nd, the 29th, the January 5th, and January 12th. Councils had a chance to review all the dispersments from December the 22nd, 29th, January 5th, and the 12th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Sound good to everybody? Okay? Hearing none, the chair will move that the dispersments be accepted by unanimous consent. That's great. Okay, now we've got an update from our new doctor, from the Talbot County Health Officer, Maria McGuire. She's an M.D., an MPP, and FAAAP. So Maria, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good. That's half the battle.
Excellent. So we want to congratulate you for being here. We're so excited. We've been working together now for the last couple of weeks. I can tell you this, it's been great knowing you. It's been great working with you so far. And I can say you and me got a lot on our shoulders.
Me too.
And you're doing a phenomenal job. So I'm going to give you a few minutes to bring counsel and the public up to speed on some of the good things that are happening. And I'm going to give the floor to you for a few minutes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I did have a slide deck. I don't know if someone's able to, or if I can pull it up myself.
Okay, I went ahead and made you the presenter so you could share that file.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. All right.
There we go.
Can you view the slides?
Yep, we're good.
Excellent. And please let me know if anyone has any trouble with any of the technical aspects as I proceed. So thank you so much, President Callahan, for welcoming me to this. This is my first opportunity to update the council on the status of the pandemic from the perspective of the Health Department. And I've been able to work with you and Clay very closely these past few weeks. And I hope to work with the rest of the council closely in the coming weeks and months as well. So thank you. And let's begin. So just to zoom out on where we are in the pandemic, I'd like to start with just a status update. We are in the midst of a surge, as anyone who's been paying attention to the news is aware of. Globally, we've passed 89.7 million cases and over 1.9 million deaths. These are statistics from the World Health Organization. In the U.S., starting from the beginning, we've actually been in essentially three surges. And the surge we're in now that started in the late fall has really had about three different mini-surges within it. And so these are the, certainly, the highest caseloads we've been seeing. In the U.S., we have reached a total of 22.3 million cases of COVID-19 since the pandemic began. And we've crossed the threshold of 373,000 deaths in the U.S. That's as of yesterday. The average daily case rate, this is something I will allude to, per population in the U.S. is 74 right now. And I will give figures as to what Maryland's and Talbot's is a little bit later on. And that's helpful to compare. So looking at the U.S., this map just essentially shows some hotspots of where case rates are the worst. And right now, it's been moving around. Right now, it's been centering in California, Oklahoma, Arkansas. Maryland has always been in the kind of low to moderate risk, but we definitely have our share of cases. And this figure shows that sort of triple peak we've been seeing. And right now, as of today, we have a cumulative caseload of 312,351 cases in Maryland since the pandemic began. And we've been averaging over 2,000 new cases each day since this surge started earlier in the winter. Our positive, our testing positivity has now averaged in Maryland 8.77%. That's much higher than it was in the fall when it was closer to 5. And we have surpassed over 6,000 deaths in Maryland since the pandemic began. Currently, we're keeping a very close eye on how many individuals are hospitalized. Right now, there are 1,952 people in Maryland hospitalized with COVID-19. And this is really the highest it's been. And that is really important because if we remember back to the spring, it was all about trying to keep that curve down to protect the ability of our healthcare providers and hospitals to respond to surges. This is a graph from our dashboard, which kind of shows these metrics for Talbot. And I'll go into more detail, but as you can see, the general shape, we have also been mimicking that surge, that kind of triple surge, especially in the last couple of months. So this is kind of a noisy graph, but this is basically showing the number of new cases we've been having per day since August. And really, until the end of October, we were averaging well below 10 new cases per day in the county. But now, we've actually been averaging closer to 30, the mid-30s. And this next graph has actually smoothed that out. And so basically, this is when I average the number of new cases over the past week. Then you see that from August till about mid-November, we were averaging below 5 cases per day in Talbot County. And it has just continued to increase ever since then, brought on by what I'm calling like this triple holiday of, I think it really started with Halloween, and then Thanksgiving, and on top, Christmas and New Year's, where to now, we are averaging in the mid-30s. And time will tell where that goes. I'm really hoping we will start to plateau soon. Sorry, wrong way. The positivity is another index to look at. And this is a figure that shows us what percent of tests done in an area are coming back positive. And for Maryland, as I mentioned, it was like 8.77% today. In Talbot County, except for a few blips here in the summer and a little blip here in October, we had generally stayed below the state average. And unfortunately, since the end of December, we've actually gone above the state average. And now, we're actually quite close to 10% of our positivity. And this is a number we really aim to have below 5%. When we looked at our cases in terms of demographics, we found that over the past month and a half, the ethnicity and race makeup of the cases is predominantly non-Hispanic white, with a significant minority of cases occurring in African-Americans. So they constitute 14% of the cases that have been happening in the past month and a half, and a very small percentage of other groups such as Hispanics and Asian. Looking by age, we see that the majority of cases locally have been occurring in the young adult and sort of middle-aged range. So we're not seeing hardly any cases in the younger children, and most of our cases are not happening in the older ages. The good news there is that, of course, the mortality and morbidity of individuals over 70 is significant, and they do still account for the majority of deaths in the U.S. Now, the funny thing is, our age breakdown is actually mimic, this is the U.S. age breakdown. And for some reason, they also have these bimodal peaks where it's the 18- to 29-year-olds and the 50- to 64-year-olds that are, for some reason, constituting the greatest proportion. Another metric I like to look at is, as I mentioned before, what I call the case rate. And this is the number of new cases each day that's benchmarked to a population of 100,000. And that makes it easy to compare the number of cases in different locations with different populations. And so again, we were cruising along just fine, under 10 for most of the early fall. And then, in early November, we started to increase. And now, we are actually close to 90, which is very high. And this is, some places in the country had much higher rates. I remember a couple of months ago, North Dakota, Tennessee were approaching the 200s. But this is significant for us. And according to our contact tracing data, we seem that, we've identified that of cases that we can identify the source, it was social gatherings, family gatherings, that source that seems to account for this surge. And again, when I zoom in just over the past couple of months, you can see where that trend is going. One thing I did want to mention is that just today, the Maryland Department of Health confirmed that there were two cases in Maryland of the new, what's called the B.117 strain of COVID. This is a strain of the coronavirus that was identified in the United Kingdom in December as a new strain. Now, one thing to remember about coronavirus and other viruses in general is that they do go through mutations at a relatively frequent basis. And the vast majority of these mutations are benign and have no effect on anything. And this coronavirus is thought to have a new mutation, I believe about once a month. And up till now, those mutations that have been discovered have not really had any significant effect clinically. However, this new B.117 strain, which has been identified in a few countries now, seems to be more transmissible between people than other strains. So basically, that means it's more contagious. However, the good news is, it does not seem to cause a higher severity of illness or increased risk of death. So we do not think that this will necessarily increase the risk of hospitalization, but it may mean that more people do get infected or get infected more easily than they would have with the previous strains that have been circulating. The good news also is that the currently available COVID-19 vaccines do appear to have good efficacy against this strain. And that's very important as we roll out the vaccines this spring. I wanted to give an update about the efforts that we at the Health Department are leading to respond to the pandemic. One of the major things we're trying to do is make sure we have adequate testing in the county. And just as a background, again, to bring everyone up to speed, there's two major types of tests that are available in the community. One is called the PCR. It stands for polymerase chain reaction. And this is a test that directly identifies the genetic material of the virus. So it identifies if there's virus in your body or a virus particle in your body. And this is really considered the gold standard test, especially when you use the long swab that goes back to what's called your nasopharynx back way behind your nose. And the reason that this is the gold standard is it does have the highest sensitivity, and it has a very, very high specificity. And what that means is that with the sensitivity is, it detects as many cases as it can, and it's also specific in identifying that it is coronavirus as opposed to a different type of virus. So the good news is, when you get a positive test with the PCR, we're pretty certain that you can believe that test. It's rare, but it is still possible that with the PCR test, you may get false negatives. And this is often the case if a test is done too early in the disease. For instance, if I'm infected today and I get a test tomorrow, I would probably get a negative result, even though I've been infected because my body has, or the virus hasn't had enough time to replicate to the point that it would show up on a test. And so that can sometimes give people a false sense of security. It's still the gold standard to use, but it's not necessarily a free license to not follow the other guidelines and protocols that we recommend. The good news recently is that several companies have put out on the market what are called point-of-care versions of this test. Often, it takes two or even three days or longer to get results back, which is a problem when you're trying to manage a pandemic. And these rapid versions can result at the point of care, at, say, the doctor's office, as early as 15 minutes and sometimes up to 60 minutes. And that can give you an answer that you can act on much more quickly. And some practices have started using those in the region. Another type of test is the antigen test. Often, people refer to this simply as a "rapid test." And it is also point-of-care, which is very convenient. The problem with this test is that it was generally, originally FDA-approved just for symptomatic patients. And so that means that in an asymptomatic person, sometimes it may give you an incorrect result, more so than if you had symptoms. And so what we find with this is a little bit higher rate of false negative, and to a lesser extent, even some false positives. However, the benefit with these tests is that they are done rapidly, so sometimes it helps to kickstart a response. One thing we're seeing locally is that we have noticed some providers starting to do these tests. And the key thing with point-of-care tests is because they're done in an office setting, the onus is on the provider, the tester, the office, to report the results to the Health Department. And there is a mechanism for them to do that. But sometimes, we notice that we don't receive results reported in a timely fashion, and that's something we'd like to ask the community to make sure they're doing. In Talbot County, we've been trying to make testing very readily available. So we run a site that we've been running since June on Tuesday and Thursday mornings over at the Elks Lodge on Dutchman's Lane. In early January, we added Friday mornings to help respond to the demand due to the surge. And those will continue till at least the end of January, and we may need to extend that as well. Next Wednesday, we are starting evening hours as well. We are still finalizing the details of that, but we do hope to offer some evening hours at least once, if not twice, a week going forward so that people who are not able to come to our testing site in the mornings are able to do so perhaps after work. There are other sites at Chesapeake College, the other neighboring Health Departments, and also in Cambridge, the Rite Aid is, I believe, starting to offer testing as well. So often, if someone calls us from the community and we're not offering testing at that moment, we can refer them to another site, which they also give very good service. And we have been seeing an average of about 100 tests per day, if not more, at each of the times that we test. Another response that we've been running since the beginning of the pandemic is contact tracing. And this is something that originally all the Health Departments were doing in-house, but over the months, it's turned out that fewer and fewer county Health Departments are able to provide this in-house service. But we've been able to sustain it. And the benefit is, it allows us to know and track every single case involving a Talbot resident, and therefore, we are kept aware of situational awareness of outbreaks and trends in real time, which we wouldn't be able to do if we outsourced it to a vendor. And this also allows us to communicate with our neighbor in counties about cases that may involve more than one county, which sometimes we see in cases involving schools. The drawbacks of this is that it is expensive, and it does use a lot of staff, and they're very busy. However, they're doing a really excellent job. And this is a little busy to see, but basically, this is a measurement of our performance over the past couple of months and how many cases, what percent of cases of infected people we're able to call within 24 hours of the notification that there's a case. And we have, except for a few rare occasions, been able to call 100% of these individuals within 24 hours. And that has remained true even as our cases have risen significantly. This is the most recent data I have for our contact tracing performance. But really, the number of cases have really risen significantly over the past several weeks. And each of these lines is a week. So the last peak we had was actually in the summer, in July. In fact, we've done so well that often on these weekly performance measures, we are either number one or two in the state in terms of the percent of cases that we respond to in a timely fashion. And you can see on this graph that the bars that are in blue are the number of counties that do conduct their contact tracing in-house, so to speak. And when you look across Maryland at this point, only 61% of the cases, as in the people infected with COVID, are able to be called by a contact tracer, just due to simply the significant increase in the number of cases that these people have to call. So we are very lucky that we have that service we're running. One thing that we do notice is, often, our problem is, we will reach out to a person, but either they don't answer or they're not able to complete an interview. So this is an area where we would love to continue to work on stopping the spread, but we really rely on people to answer the calls. So please do so when you see our number pop up. And I'm very excited to move on and talk about our vaccination efforts. This is a new development since the council was last updated, as we've been receiving doses of vaccine since right before Christmas. And it has really been an all-consuming effort, but so important and really probably the most significant thing we will be able to do to reach an end to this pandemic. So as background, there are currently two vaccines on the market in the U.S. One is manufactured by Pfizer, and one is manufactured by a company called Moderna. They are very similar in the sense that they both require two doses in order to achieve maximum efficacy. And they vary just in, the Pfizer one, the two doses are at a three-week interval, and for Moderna, they're at a four-week interval. And they vary slightly in the age for which they're approved. So currently, we do not have any COVID vaccines that are approved for children under 16 years old. The really amazing thing about these vaccines is that on their initial research studies that allowed them to get approved by the FDA, they were shown to be extremely effective. And for Pfizer, after two doses, it's 95% effective at preventing someone from getting infected with COVID. And for Moderna, it's almost about the same, at 94%. And the reason I want to point this out is because most of our "normal" vaccines that children get are not this effective. There are a few, such as measles. But this is really exciting because it really means that this vaccine will have a very significant effect, I hope, at really ending the pandemic. And I think this was even more amazing because it was developed in record time. Sorry.
Dr. McGuire, could we pause just a few minutes, please? We're having some difficulty. There's people that can't log in. And could we take a few minutes and just pause for a second? And we'll just be right back, okay?
Oh, no problem. Sure.
Yeah, just hold up on the information for a few minutes. Okay, I'm going to update on everybody a little bit. So there's a few bad numbers like logging in, and we had a couple of wrong numbers. And if the public is listening, we're very, very sorry. We are getting it all straight for you. So that way you can log back in and we can kind of move forward. So if everybody would be patient a little bit, we'll be back in a few minutes. I would like to make another announcement. If anybody is listening for the public hearing, we've got a couple little minor WebEx events that we've had some wrong numbers and we're trying to redo some of the codes and stuff and event numbers so people can get on there. And we really apologize. So if you could just bear with us, Dr. McGuire from the Health Department, she is giving some really good information. So if you could hold tight, we'll be back on just in a few minutes. And she's got some very good stuff and information for everybody. So if everybody could just be patient, I'd appreciate it. Okay, everybody, council is back. We are right now, Mrs. Morris, I'm going to leave it to her. She's going to give us some information that will help everybody get online. So Mrs. Morris, could you go ahead and tell everybody what process we need to go to?
Yes, council, apologies. We've been realizing that some people were not able to call into the meeting this evening, and we've identified that the incorrect event number password was posted. The correct number is now showing up on the WebEx screen. This meeting is also being videoed with MCTV and on their YouTube channel, and it is, the correct information is being posted. The call-in number is still 415-655-0002, or toll-free 855-797-9485. And the correct access code for tonight's meeting is 1-800-231-5433. Again, the correct number is 1-800-231-5433. And the event password for tonight is 011221.
Okay, okay. Is, so should we, Mrs. Morris, would you like us to move on or should we wait a few minutes until people get online, you think?
I think that this has been posted, it's been running on MCTV and YouTube for approximately 10 minutes. I think you can go ahead and move on.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, I appreciate it. And sometimes things happen and we definitely apologize. So Dr. McGuire, I apologize to you too. I know you were in the midst of everything. So if you could just maybe, you know, kind of, you know, just a small recap for two minutes and then, and then keep on, keep on with your presentation, please. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you. So just to recap for our new listeners and viewers, we, I went over the numbers in terms of the statistics of COVID in U.S. and Maryland and Talbot. We are in a surge right now. And I reviewed the efforts we're doing to respond, including our testing, which for anyone who's unaware, we are offering testing three days a week in the mornings, and we will be starting up at least one evening per week next Wednesday. More details on that to come out literally in the next day or two. And our contact tracing efforts are continuing at full speed. So please, if anyone gets the call that they are, you know, a case of COVID, that they have been infected with COVID or have been exposed, please do answer because that will help us out greatly in reducing the spread in our community. So I just started talking about the two vaccines that are coming, and they seem to be working really well. There's actually new data I heard about yesterday that in the under 65 population, these vaccines may be even more effective, up to 97%. So that is very, very, very promising. This is preliminary data, so as we continue through giving more and more and more people the doses, we'll get, we'll get more refined data. The Health Department and most of the smaller health departments have been exclusively receiving the Moderna vaccine. It is a little bit easier to store and handle. It requires
Dr. McGuire, can you share your screen again, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's fine. Thank you.
So we are, we are administering the Moderna vaccine. Several hospitals and even some larger health departments have received the Pfizer vaccine. This is the one that does require the very super cold storage. But for our purposes, we have been getting the Moderna vaccine in case anyone is interested in knowing. So in terms of how many vaccines have been administered so far, in the world as of today, 29 million people have been vaccinated with at least one dose in 43 different countries. In the U.S. to date, 9.27 million doses have been administered. And of those, over 379,000 people have actually completed their two-dose series, so they're fully vaccinated. This is lower than what we, I guess, were originally hoping in terms of the initial goals, but, but we've only been vaccinating for not even a full month in this country. So again, over 9 million people have received at least one dose, and that's of 27 million doses distributed by the federal government so far. So that is just about 36% of the distributed vaccines that have been administered. So this is a point that I believe could be improved upon. It's, you know, the logistics of this are difficult, but it's something we need to get better about so that when a dose is distributed to a state, it gets in an arm as quickly as possible. However, there are many steps in the process. It's, you know, the federal government distributes doses to the state, then they need to allocate amongst themselves to different entities such as hospitals and health departments and pharmacies. And then they in turn need to plan their own, you know, administration sites. So, so we have improved over the past few weeks. And, and as I've mentioned, over 9 million people have been vaccinated so far, but we have a ways to go. In Maryland, so far, 359,000 doses have been allocated to Maryland, and most of those have been actually delivered to the administering providers, including local health departments. So far, 169,784 doses have been given. So actually, we are above the national average in that respect, that 47% of the doses that have gone out to the communities have been actually administered into someone's arm. And so we've given 160,000 first doses and 965, sorry, 9,655 people have received their second doses in Maryland. And so this is a chart that shows over the past week how we've actually been able to almost double the number of doses that Maryland has gotten out. So this hopefully will continue to improve, but it is totally dependent upon the number of doses that the state receives, which my best knowledge is that each week, we as a state receive approximately 70,000 doses. In Talbot County, we've been doing pretty well. So we have had, as of today, 1,583 first doses given, and that is, that accounts for 4.258% of our population. So actually, today, right now, we're the second highest county in terms of the percent of our population that has been given a dose of COVID vaccine, only behind Garrett County. So that's really good. The average for Maryland right now is just over 2% of the population has been given a dose.
Dr. McGuire?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick question. That population includes children between the ages of zero and 18. So that number, that percentage, you might want to consider putting it out there of age of 16 and over, and that would make it look a little different because we're not vaccinating any children.
That is very true. Exactly. My, my hope is that the studies which are currently underway to include children in the vaccine effort will be completed in the coming months. So we will eventually try to, but yes, you're exactly right. In the current state, our population is of eligible, let's say, people who are eligible to receive the vaccine is not 37,000. So we, that is, as you say, is a slight underestimate. So this, this slide was up to date as of this morning, but since then has been changed a little bit. So as of this morning, we received 1,100 doses, but later today, we received an additional 600. So as of this morning, we had a Talbot County Health Department given 79% of our vaccine. We administered it already. The average for Maryland health departments right now is that 41% of the doses received have been administered into people's arms. So this chart is, gives kind of the flow of what we've been receiving each week compared to the amount of doses that we've been able to administer. So the, we received our first smaller allotment of 100 doses on December 23rd, and we were able to start administering those the following week. So as of the end of last Friday, we had given out 700 doses. And by the end of this week, we will have given out all 1,700 doses that we've received. Given that it's only Tuesday, and we actually have a vaccine clinic occurring right this minute, we have, as of now, given 950, but we have 830 doses scheduled for later this week. And so we are managing to get those doses of vaccine out pretty efficiently. And so I have requested higher numbers of doses, and hopefully we will receive those because we want to get people covered as, as quickly as possible. The, the order in which we are reaching out to people to get them vaccinated can be seen in this priority pyramid. And this is the prioritization list that the state and the governor have put out in terms of what our target audiences are at different stages. So right now, Maryland and Talbot County are in the 1A phase, and that's in the red text. And that includes healthcare workers. It includes the residents and staff of nursing homes, and it includes first responders, public safety corrections. And as we proceed down through the different phases, more and more people are folded into eligibility. So we are working very hard with community partners, members of our EOC, in trying to identify the individuals and groups who will be eligible at different stages so that when we do receive vaccine, we can get it out as soon as possible. We, just a detail, in terms of healthcare workers, we are blessed in Talbot County to have quite a lot of healthcare workers in the county living and working here. And so that has been defined by the state as any professional who is licensed, registered, or certified by a professional board overseen by the Maryland Department of Health. So if anyone meets those criteria, please do contact us to get vaccinated. We are at this point, due to our limited numbers of vaccine supply, requiring, you know, proof of eligibility in that 1A category. But we have tried to reach out to every healthcare worker we know, and in case anyone has been missed, there is And in case anyone has been missed, there is a Google form that is available on the talbotcovid19.org website. So please do fill that out. And we will get you scheduled as soon as possible so that we can move to complete Phase 1A as soon as possible. So again, we will be moving through the phases. The big, big question right now is, when will we move to different phases? And we've been getting a lot of inquiries about when will certain individuals be able to get the vaccine? And really, the tough answer to this is it's a little uncertain right now exactly when we'll move to each phase. I can tell you more closely that we will be entering the Phase 1B soon, if we can. Soon as in, hopefully, by the end of next week. And if we're given the go-ahead, we would love to proceed to the 1B phase. It's important to note that certain jurisdictions, due to their makeup or size, may be in the 1A category longer than others. There are some that have well-completed their 1A and are eager to move into the 1B phase. So we are asking permission to proceed at the pace that we're able to so that we can continue to make progress. And really, our biggest obstacle right now is simply the number of doses we're getting. If we receive them, we can get them out. Just finishing up here, for informing the public, we are conducting a variety of different types of clinics at which we administer vaccine. We have an indoor clinic, a mass indoor clinic. Last week, we vaccinated 402 people at this clinic. And we also will be planning a drive-through clinic at our testing site. But now that it's cold, we're trying to do these indoor. We are also conducting smaller clinics for specific audiences, such as the assisted living facilities currently, where we go to them. Once we enter the Phase 1B, where we're open more to the general public and the later phases, we will be hosting clinics in multiple locations so that they aren't all located in Easton. A big question is, well, how do I get signed up? The state requires every individual who's getting a vaccine to register within an online secure appointment website system called PrepMod. And so we, because we realize that not everyone has easy access to the internet or an email address, we are quickly creating a call center to field various vaccine-related questions and to help members of the community with appointment scheduling so that anyone who's eligible can get scheduled as soon as possible. And we are also conducting outreach with our community partners to make sure that we are able to get in touch with the most vulnerable in our community so that they are included. For up-to-date information on the phases, on news, you know, the information is changing rapidly. I do urge if people have internet access to go to the talbotcovid19.org website. That's our central repository of COVID-19 information. We are also posting information on the Talbot County Health Department website. And both of those also have Facebook feeds. And a good place to go to learn about the vaccine, where we are in the phases, and to answer some frequently asked questions is the Maryland Department of Health vaccine website. I've put that link here. And again, we will be creating a vaccine call center, which I'm hoping will go live next week so that people will be able to call with questions and again, to help schedule. So we have been getting a lot of volunteer interest from the community, which is wonderful. We definitely want to take advantage of this. We need people who are able to vaccinate, people who are not clinically experienced but can help us with check-in or management of the flow of people, who can help monitor after people get vaccines, and to, you know, staff our call center. So if anyone is interested in volunteering for us, we will be doing this quite a long time, several months. Please do go to Maryland Responds. That is the pool of volunteers that we are using to bring on our volunteers. And that's the link. It takes you to this website where you can easily register now. And then we will reach out to you. So thanks, everyone, for offering to volunteer because it is greatly needed and, you know, many hands make light work. So just one last thought. We are, in my mind, entering the home stretch this month of January and probably February will be difficult in terms of numbers. But I just have three asks of everyone, which is, please continue to wear your mask and facial coverings diligently. They're very effective. Please try to avoid, you know, social gatherings or large crowds. And when you are eligible to do so, please do sign up to get your vaccine. So thank you very much. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Yep. All right. Well, Dr. McGuire, I can't thank you enough for your presentation. A lot of information. You're doing such a great job. We are pushed for time a little bit tonight. So I would ask council if they do have any questions, if we could kind of keep it a little bit short. Because after this, I want to go to the public hearing because we are running a half hour late and everything. But while everybody is listening, Dr. McGuire, I want to commend your staff. I was at the Easton Volunteer Fire Department last night, and I got my shot last night. And I can tell everybody that, for me personally, I didn't even hardly feel the shock. And I had no soreness, no nothing. I was, it was great. But your staff was absolutely phenomenal, professional. I think you had six or seven stations there. And we probably did, you probably know the number. There was at least probably 100 that you guys did, maybe 200, you know. But you did, your staff is doing a great job. And I know we're all in a tough situation here. So I can't thank you enough. You're working late hours. And as council, we really appreciate it. So I'm going to open it up to council for a quick comment.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Just two quick questions. One, my compliments to Dr. McGuire and her department. Contact tracing effort is truly impressive. The testing effort is truly impressive. My question is really, do you have the resources that you need? The staffing, the funding, the time for this vaccine rollout? On top of everything else your department is doing right now? It sounds like you do, but I just wanted that confirmation on the.
Well, everyone is working very, very hard. We are hoping to, you know, the funding was a little, I guess, disrupted. We anticipate funding for the vaccination efforts to come our way. As of now, we really haven't received any, told exactly how much we'll be receiving locally or when. So the good news is we will have funding to carry us through. I'm not so much worried about that. And then we can, you know, staff up as needed. But we are, at this point, relying on our internal staff, volunteers, and also the National Guard to help us. In fact, they are coming on Friday to help us. And they will hopefully also help us with our testing site, too. So we definitely welcome volunteers. You know, this is a really long effort, and we're running a lot of different things. So, you know, we're in an okay place right now. But we will be trying to hire on some more people to help with this effort soon.
I have a question. How are you doing tonight?
Hi.
So you had a lot more detailed breakdown by age and by ethnicity and stuff tonight. But we don't get that on the dashboard. And so when there was an article last week in the paper where the, unfortunately, the most recent, I think, three or four deaths were, you know, the older in the nursing home. So people need to know where it is. And there is, so that they don't, if there's 100 some odd cases, but 70 of them are in the nursing homes, I mean, while that's very sad, people need to know what's active that's out in the community and what's active, you know, what's contained within either a hospital or a nursing home or something like that. So I would ask if you could add to our dashboard and have it mimic the Maryland dashboard, which always lists the cases and the deaths by age group. I mean, I understand maybe earlier on, when there was only three or four, that you would maybe be giving up who it is. But at this point, there's been so many that I think that's important for people to know. You know, so if you could, if you could take, obviously, I know you're very familiar with the Maryland dashboard. And get that breakdown by age and, you know, and when you are reporting a death. You know, again, sad, no matter where it is. But if, again, if those outbreaks are in, you know, not in the general community, I just think it's important for people to know that. And I think really on a daily, which obviously, a lot of people don't even read, you know, every week or two or a presentation like this. While this was wonderful, we got much more information. And I think a lot of that, if you can carry that over into the daily dashboard, would be very helpful for people.
Yeah, I totally agree. That is something I'm really hoping to add more information to the dashboard and our website. And so, you know, I think that's useful because it, people need to know where our case is happening. And right now, they're in that kind of community, you know, kind of what I call middle-aged range. So it's helpful to know because it allows people to know that, you know, where the risk is. So yeah, so point taken. Yeah, we will try to.
I mean, every day, it's updated on Facebook. It's the same questions. Oh, my gosh, this is terrible. Where is, where is it? I mean, you see, I'm sure you're following the Facebook page. They're asking the same questions, and they've been asking for months for that information. So now that you're here with us, hopefully, you can hear what the community is asking for. Thank you very much.
Dr. McGuire, this is Frank DiVillia. I'll be very brief. One, it takes a very special person to step up at this time during a pandemic to fill the role that you filled. And I want to thank you for doing that. It's nice to know that you were the deputy so that you were prepared and had a good grasp on it. But I will echo Mr. Leisher's words. If there's anything that this council, Board of Health, can do to help you, please let us know, and we will quickly rush to help you. You're doing an amazing job, and we want to support that. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would also just like to thank you for adding the additional testing this month. I know we're very optimistic about the final stage of this and moving through it, but getting those vaccinations. But the testing is still very important, and I greatly appreciate you.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, just one more question for Dr. McGuire.
Yeah, could I, before, I think one thing, one thing where Ken Cazell is up for next. And Ken, if you're listening, I would like to go to the public hearing and do a couple cleaning up things on the public hearing. If you could stay online and you have time, we would love to hear from you. So I just wanted to say that. Go ahead, Mr. Leisher.
Thank you. You presented the rollout that the state is using, the priority system. And I'm curious, will Talbot County be following that exactly as prescribed by the state? Or are you looking for any flexibility in that? Or is that the plan?
We are following that as closely as we can so that there is consistency across the jurisdictions. However, if we have vaccine, we will really want to move forward. I don't want anything to sit in a freezer. And so that's one thing we really want, you know, permission for, is to proceed through the phases when we're ready.
I would like to follow up with that. So we're getting some letters, as I'm sure you are. And for somebody who is 50 or 60 years old, and they have diabetes, or they have a major comorbidity, and they're asking for a vaccine, and somebody who is maybe in their 20s or 30s or 40s, who happens to be a grocery store worker. I'm sorry, I think that person who is at a health risk should get it first. So I would like to, and I thought we saw a draft of a letter, to write back to the governor. I think we need flexibility on that because, you know, well, there are certain people that want to get this, and everybody wants it. The people who are truly at their own personal health risk, you know, the grocery store workers, thank God, they've been doing it. And all the people that work in the Walmarts and, you know, all the retail stores and all of that. But if you're, you know, if you are a healthy person. And somehow, we've got to have that flexibility to be able to do that. And I think that, you know, if we sent a letter, maybe other jurisdictions would do the same thing. And maybe they would start, you know, rather than 1B and then 1C, maybe it's 1B and C together, or the age. I mean, just because you're 75, you could be a very healthy 75-year-old and a very unhealthy 60-year-old. So I think we need to push on that. I really do. And start sending letters and getting them to listen. They had to start somewhere. But, you know, it just, it just seems, people know what their health risk is. Again, I got a mom, she's in great shape. She's 79 years old. She doesn't need this yet. But somebody who's 60, they do. So does council want to consider sending any type of letter regards to this?
Well, I was going to let everybody, I was going to let everybody speak. Corey, do you want, do you, do you need, would you like to say something, Corey?
Not really. I saw the draft of the letter that's being proposed. I think just as Dr. McGuire says.
Okay.
As every county health officer probably wants the latitude and the freedom to be able to move through, say, this. Probably run into grocery store to get down to the 1C category. So, but I think, you know, allowing some flexibility within the counties based on what the health officer is seeing is not a bad idea.
Okay, that's great. Well, I appreciate that. One last thing, Mr. Stapp, go ahead for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I would just also like to remind council that we have our county staff that's fully engaged. I mean, clearly, this is an all-hands-on-deck response for this pandemic. I would like to recognize Dr. McGuire. She's been all-in, all-open, and welcoming our support. We have our EOC team that's facilitating coordination around all issues with Geneva and Nancy. Our EMS system, we've trained vaccinators. Our paramedics can help with vaccinations. And from communications, we have Cassandra and Maria's team working together to make sure we're flowing information as quickly as we can. But we're also engaging the business community. As you know, under your leadership, we've been pushing out cares, grants to businesses and individuals. So this is an all-hands-on-deck. And we will continue to have the Emergency Operations Center activated and supporting public health, our business community, as well as our education systems as we move through the pandemic. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stapp. So council, I would like to ask council their feelings on the flexibility letter. I think Dr. McGuire needs a little bit of help and a little bit of support. And I'm all for it. So how does council feel about that?
Council President Callahan, this is Frank DiVillia. So I would like to be perfectly clear on this. This was a letter that I sent out last night asking for support and sending it so that Dr. McGuire would have the ability, if she saw pockets in the community, saw nursing homes, saw a facility or something that was in a major need, and she needed to step outside the box to save them and protect them. I wanted her to have that ability. I do not want every person with any underlying symptom or comorbidity to start calling in and trying to make an early appointment for a vaccination ahead of when they're supposed to be. This was just to give her the latitude that she needs to make sure she's protecting us. But I want the motion that we send the letter providing, or recommending to Governor Hogan that she's allowed the flexibility that she needs.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second to send a support letter?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to send a letter to Governor Hogan for flexibility support for Dr. McGuire to help our community and make some of these decisions when, when decisions are tough decisions or need to be made. All in favor?
I just want to be clear that this is in fact the flexibility that our health officer needs before we proceed. Desires?
So you want to hear from her?
I do.
Okay, no problem. Dr. McGuire, are you there?
Yes. Yeah. So the flexibility that I would be seeking is to allow us to, you know, move to phases at, at the pace that we are able to. And when needed, as Councilman DeVilleo mentioned, to be able to access certain, you know, very high risk groups and vaccinate them when there's a significant need.
Yes. It sounds good. Okay. So I think everybody's in favor. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye. And I, I will, I presume that we will now adjust the wording of the letter to reflect Dr. McGuire's request.
Well, probably what we should do is, 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 yes, I would say we would do that, send it to council, make sure council, it's good with council, make sure it's good with Dr. McGuire, then send it. Yes. Is that good? Okay. So I think we got all yays. And any opposed? Okay, okay. Thank, Dr. McGuire, we can't thank you enough for all you're doing and all the updates. And I want to make sure that you're always welcome to reach out to us if you need any help on our end. We know we're one big team. We've, we stress that. So I just want to make sure that's crystal clear to you. It's, we're only one phone call away and we, we're on the phone every day. So just, just make sure you realize that. Okay, we're here to help you.
I do. And thank you very much for all the support from council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, I'm going to switch things around a little bit. I have talked to Ken Kozel, and he is willing to hang out for a little bit. And the people that are, what are, at a public hearing, listening for the public hearing, they've been very, very patient. We apologize. We've had a couple little glitz in, in the, on the computer and stuff of trying to getting people online, but we've got it all taken care of. So I'm going to call the public hearing. Council will be here at a public hearing. And it's the next, next item on business. Madam Secretary, will you please read the first resolution into the record, please?
Bill number 1467, an ordinance to adopt the codification and revision of the ordinances of Talbot County, Maryland, providing for the maintenance of said code, establishing a penalty for altering or tampering with the code, and making certain substantive changes in previously adopted ordinances.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will open the public hearing for bill 1467. If you wish to provide comments on the bill, please provide your name. You will have three minutes if you're, if you're speaking, and five minutes, five minutes if you are representing somebody to speak on the bill. Mr. Jordan, do we, do we have anybody online that wants to speak about the bill?
We do have several people online. No one has indicated that they wish to speak. Again, if you're interested in speaking, either press the raise hand if you're on the computer. And if you're on the phone, it's asterisk three, and that'll indicate you will wish to speak.
Great. So at, at this time, you're telling us that nobody is asking about this bill?
No one is indicating they wish to speak.
Okay, okay, no problem. All right. I will now close the public hearing on bill 1467. 1467 will be eligible for a vote on Tuesday, the 26th, unless council wishes to move the bill to the third reader tonight for action.
I don't know. I'm happy to move it to the third reader.
Okay. All right. So council.
Second.
Okay. There's, there's a motion and a second to, I'm sorry.
Should we not hear from a planning officer before we take action on the bill for any clarification on what this measure actually does?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Pack. I couldn't quite hear you.
Should we not hear from our planning officer prior to making a motion to move this bill forward this evening?
Um, Mr. Pack, I'd be honest with you. I don't, I don't have a problem. We could, we could hold it off to next meeting if you'd like.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that, that must be heard.
Miguel's on the line, is he not?
Miguel, are you on the line?
I am on the line.
Oh, okay. Would you, would you mind, would you mind speaking for bill 1467? There you are. You were hiding.
Good morning, council member, or good evening, council members. I, I would like to, I would love to speak on this, except this, I wasn't briefed on the bill prior. My understanding, and if, if Mr. Cooper Smith is on the line.
Yeah, sure.
That would be great. My understanding is this, what I was told by the former planning officer was that this was a, this is periodically done to integrate other text amendments to the code that Ecode is required to integrate. That's what I was told. Didn't seem to, you know, have raised any concerns in our end. Mr. Cooper Smith, if you're on the line, I just want to know if, or if you could just clarify for me if that's a correct reading of the intent of that legislation.
Yes, I'm happy to jump in here. The purpose of this bill is to do a general recodification of the Talbot County Code. And under the Talbot County Charter, this general recodification is meant to occur approximately once every 20 years, at least once every 20 years. So the last time that the council did this was around 2001. So in this case, the county has worked with general code publishers to go through and work on recodifying and drawing together our whole code, plus all the legislation that we've adopted, and just repackaging it into a coherent form. So that's what we're doing here.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Miguel. Far, far as council, is council, is council okay with that? Or is that, is that, is that, is that a little better for you, Corey?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That is sufficient. I just think just for the, for the audience and for council, that we had a clear understanding of what that was. I know I had spoken to Mr. Cooper Smith about it earlier this week. I am satisfied. I have no objection, I have no objection to the motion to move it to third reader this evening.
Okay, okay, Mr. Pack. I appreciate it. That was a good point you brought up, too. I appreciate that. Mr. Leisher?
Yes, Mr. Callahan. I seem to recall, and perhaps staff can confirm, that this was an anticipated item. There was some cost involved in, in the consultant in, in pulling this all together. I remember a budget time arranging for this and anticipating that the every 20 year need to, to recodify the, the Talbot County Code.
Okay. Sounds great. So, okay, so council, I think we are in agreement to move it to our third reader. I think, I'd like to have a motion to go to third reader.
We already did that.
Okay. All right. So we've got a motion and a second. Move it to third, yes, move it to third reader. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
No, she has to start reading it.
We have to vote on the, we have to vote to move it to third reader, right?
Yes.
You're correct, Mr. Callahan. That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is seconded, and everything was approved. So now, Madam Secretary, I'd like to move it to third reader. And could you read the bill?
Bill number 1467.
I ask that so much be considered a reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Price.
No objection.
Madam, Madam Secretary, I would like to make a motion that the.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
So, so you don't have to pass a gab. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that pass, or that we accept bill number 1467. We'll pass.
Okay, okay.
So I think he calls the vote now.
A point of order, a point of order, Mr. A motion is not needed. The matter is now before council for vote.
Correct.
Right.
It's time for the vote. It's time for the vote. Thank you.
Right. So a, a, a motion to vote on the bill. So, yeah, Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
But motion carried. Thank you, council. Okay, so we've got through the public hearing. So next on the agenda would be Ken Kozel. Ken, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, everyone.
But, Ken, I can't thank you enough. You're, you're a trooper. I want to introduce you. This is an update for the University of Maryland Medical System, Shore Regional Health. Ken Kozel is president and CEO of University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. Ken, welcome. I know it's been a long night in you, and you've been, you, all of us been, you know, dealing with, with this tonight and all this information. I can't thank you enough. If you want to do a quick update on how the hospital is making out, and then one of, one of the things that I had been asked for the public and everything, is, is maybe you can give us a really quick update if there's any progress on the new hospital.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President Callahan. I appreciate the opportunity to update the council and the community this evening. And again, thank you, council, for giving me a little bit of time to tell you about our fantastic hospital system. But, but also I want to thank you for all your hard work throughout this pandemic. Your leadership and your perseverance has been phenomenal. We're 10 months into this and still have quite a ways to go, but you and your teams are fighting the good fight. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart and our team's heart for all the work that you're doing. I'd also like to thank the council, the county partners that we have within Talbot County. Clay Stamp and the team have been doing an incredible job of not only preparing, but executing on that plan these past 10 months. And it is a collaborative effort. It's a partnership, and we can't do this as your healthcare system alone. And we appreciate the county partnership support that has been from here with us from the very beginning. And then finally, a quick thank you to Dr. McGuire and welcome, as her new role as health officer for Talbot County. She did a fantastic job in her presentation. And my hope tonight is to just bring the plane down a little bit and share the impact that COVID's had on our healthcare system, and then answer any questions you have about that. It's okay to proceed?
Absolutely. Please.
Excellent. Well, when I briefed the council several months ago, actually before the pandemic started, we talked about four major areas of preparation that we were going through. And each one of those areas of preparation were all centered around developing an incident command center, both locally at Shore Regional Health, link that with the county's incident command centers, but also link that directly with the University of Maryland Medical System and the incident command center that's been built and established from day one that this pandemic started. That has really served as the backdrop for our success over these last 10 months, and will continue to serve as foundational for us to get through this pandemic as a community. So thank you for establishing that relationship and for keeping that in place. When we started our preparations for this pandemic, we focused on four major areas. That's surge, or the capability to expand our inpatient bed capacity, recognizing that we were likely going to have more patients in our hospitals than we have ever had before. And we had to plan and prepare for that. The second was staffing associated with that surge plan. We had to make sure that whatever expansion capabilities we generated, we had to have the staff to support that new patient load. The third was PPE. We had to have the appropriate personal protective equipment to make sure that we were treating patients safely and effectively. And then fourth was the equipment that accompanied that, the ventilators and things like that. We had to make sure that we had an appropriate supply at the times needed when patients were in our ICUs and on ventilators. And I'll question the council, and this is anecdotal, but there were two major challenges that we experienced early on out of those four elements. And I'll, I'll remind you, it wasn't so much our surge plan. We had developed an effective plan. We had developed an effective way to staff that plan at the time. Our biggest challenges at the time were personal protective equipment and the ventilator access. And as you'll recall, that was a national challenge to get those two major pieces in place at the time. Well, fast forward, we got through the first peak of the spring and early summer of, of this pandemic, of this calendar year. And fortunately, we had a lull over the summer. And as we progressed into this most recent peak, we really began to focus on three more elements of, of how we fight this pandemic. And that is really, how do we manage, how do we truly manage the inpatient load that we are starting to see in this third peak? As Dr. McGuire mentioned, we are seeing more hospitalized patients in our system now. We are seeing more COVID positive patients in our system at the same time. So that is taxing and stretching our hospital system. How are we dealing with those inpatients? And how are we also continuing to help support the testing needs of our community, and ultimately continuing to support the vaccination of our community? So we went from four major elements under an incident command structure to now seven major elements under an incident command structure. And I'm pleased to say because of our partnership with the University of Maryland Medical System and our close ties with our community partners, we're navigating through these challenging times effectively. Let me give you some specifics about what we're dealing with. Within the University of Maryland Medical System, we see on average about 350 to 400 COVID positive patients in our entire University of Maryland Medical System family. That's Prince George's, that's Baltimore City, that's the shore, that's Harford County, all in between 350 and 400 COVID positive patients per, per day. Shore Regional Health is averaging between 16 and 25 patients per day in our three hospitals. And they are actually spread out between our three hospitals, some in Dorchester, some in Chestertown, and the bulk being in Easton. So 15 to 25 patients per day we're seeing as, as inpatients in our system. But what we're also starting to see this peak is that those patients are sicker than what we've experienced in the past. More are needing ICU care, and even a percentage of those in the ICU are now needing ventilator care. So we're starting to see a sicker population of patients in addition to the normal volume of patients that we see this time of year. Those sick patients that are either, that have the flu, or that have heart issues or neurological disorders, we're, we're continuing to see those patients as well. So that is beginning to tax our system a little bit. And what we're trying to do on a day to day, shift by shift basis, is ensure that we provide a safe environment for our patients and for our team members who care for those patients. So our biggest challenge now is trying to have the staffing available to, to meet the increased demand of these patients in our hospitals. But fortunately, our surge plan accounts for that. And we've been able to get, get through each shift each day during this most recent peak safely, and are able to care for our patients safely at this time. So as we continue to do that, as we continue to see inpatients in our system, we are really starting to shift our gears now to continuing our efforts to focus on testing. And Dr. McGuire mentioned the recent county success rates with testing patients for COVID. That's an important part of the, of the strategy to combat this pandemic is to identify those who are positive, isolate them, do the tracers, make sure that anyone they came in contact is isolated so that we can stop the spread of this disease. So we are supporting that testing with Chesapeake College testing facilities. I can't thank Chesapeake College and Dr. Copper Smith enough for him and his team's cooperation with us being able to stand up a testing facility at Chesapeake College. He and his team enabled us to do that back in August of last year. And since then, we've tested. tested over 6,000 patients at that testing site. So, and we only are running two days a week, five hours a day. So a phenomenal support to our community by providing that testing site. Thank you so much to the college for your partnership in helping us establish that. And also, now that the weather has changed, they've provided us space indoors for our capability to move those patients indoors for testing. So with their help, we're able to see about 275 patients per day in that testing room, and we'll continue to do that as long as we possibly can. And again, with the collaborative support of Dr. Coppersmith and the team at the college. So testing will continue, and now we've also shifted very significantly towards vaccinations. Dr. McGuire went into great detail about the pyramid and the tiering structure. We at Shore are following the governor's directive on how we go in and out of those elements of the tier, and we are supporting our local health departments with testing capabilities. So to date, Shore Regional Health has members in that 1A category. Our health, our workforce is 1A, if you will. And as a result, we've received a vaccine. We've been able to vaccinate team members at all three of our hospitals and our emergency center and in Caroline County. And to date, we've vaccinated over 1,100 of our team members with the first dose of vaccine. Our goal is to finish this first round by the end of this week and allow all team members who want to get vaccinated to receive a vaccine. And then we'll quickly start next week, or actually, we've started this week a little bit with that second dose vaccination. So we're moving into that second dose, all still part of 1A that the governor's tiering structure has established. But as Dr. McGuire mentioned, as we quickly shift to 1B in the very near future, Shore Regional will work very collaboratively with our health departments to determine how we can support that 1B, 1C, number two, and number three categories as the healthcare system on the eastern shore. So we'll work collaboratively with them. We'll develop a plan that complements theirs and initiate vaccinations when and where appropriate. So those are the elements of our plan. We're working through each one of those elements very, very closely, and I think very effectively, all as the result of the initial planning that we put together at Shore. I'll take a second now to stop and see if the council's got any questions about COVID and the response that Shore Regional Health has put forth since March.
Okay, okay, counsel. Ken asking if, first of all, Ken, excellent presentation and sounds like your plan is, you know, spot on. You know, I'm not sure people understand the amount of time and your staff and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people through the state, what you do. And I can't thank you enough from the heart of Talbot County on what you're doing for Talbot County. You're just, you know, you're saving lives, and we really appreciate all the effort that you're taking in doing, Ken, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate you calling that out because our staff is phenomenal. Our team has worked tirelessly. They are weary, to be honest with you. It's been a long fight. They have, just like all of us, family members, loved ones.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Focused by this, but they continue to come to work every day. They continue to do their best. They are the true healthcare heroes in our community.
They are.
And when you compliment them with the workings of others in the county and the towns, I'm so proud and blessed to be part of this family and really I'm proud of the work that's being done every single day.
That's good. That's good. Counsel, open for comments.
I just have two quick things. Thank you for the presentation, for being with us this evening. One, are your staff saying that the outside of COVID, this is also flu season, as we know, those patients coming into the hospital that are not COVID-related, are we seeing those patients either sicker or waiting, waiting to the last minute to come into the hospital? Or what are you seeing as far as those non-COVID-related patients? And then secondly, how is Shore Health deciding to handle elective surgery? I know there was a major story on the national news about elective surgery in California and whether or not they were going to ban that or roll that back again. So my two questions again is how are we seeing the flow of non-COVID-related patients coming into the hospital? And what is Shore Health saying right now on elective surgeries?
Thank you, Councilman Pack. I appreciate those questions, and you're absolutely right. The patients that we're seeing that are coming into our emergency departments and that are being admitted into our hospital that don't have COVID are sicker than what we traditionally have seen, and it is likely because they've delayed seeking care, regardless of the messages that we've put out to say, please come to the emergency department if you need emergency care. We are open for business. We are here to serve you. Many community members chose not to make that decision because of their fear of possibly getting COVID in the hospital system. We've been able to alleviate that fear over time, and now that our community recognizes that they really do need to come in to receive that care, they are starting to come in, but they are sicker because they've delayed that care for a period of time. So we are seeing that, and the message continues to our community, anyone listening, if you do need care, emergent care, if you need care in the hospital setting, please seek that care because we are here for you regardless of whether or not you have COVID, and it is a safe environment to receive that care. So please do. The second part of your question about elective surgeries is very astute, and the answer to that question is we are looking at our surgical capacity regularly. And when I mention staffing challenges, one of the solutions that we've created is to reduce our surgical capacity so that we can have some of those team members shift to care for our inpatients. They have similar skills and similar qualities, and they're willing to go to the inpatient units to support the increased volume of patients there. So we have been able to reduce some of our surgical cases. We're down to approximately 70% of our normal volume, but with that reduction, we've been able to free staff up to be able to support our inpatient needs, all part of our surge plan, all part of the plan that makes sure that we continue to provide safe care for our patients, but doing it in a collaborative and teamwork effort from those team members who are shifting to the inpatient side. And we'll continue to do that as we see this peak and readjust and reevaluate regularly to make sure that we've got the right resources to ensure safe care for our patients and safe care for our team members who are caring for those patients.
One more question. Of those COVID patients coming in, those 15 to 25 COVID patients, I know you mentioned ventilators as one of the items that you needed early on. A, do we have enough ventilators? And how many of those COVID patients are being placed on ventilators currently?
Yeah, more good questions. The short answer is because of our relationship with the University of Maryland Medical System, we do believe we have an adequate supply of ventilators. We have not had to, we have not gone wanting for equipment as part of our capability to manage our surge with COVID. So there is an adequate supply, and we have ventilators available to care for our patients if needed. As far as the numbers go, you know, when you're looking at somewhere between 15 to 25, it's typically one or two patients of those that are on the ventilator at that time. And maybe if one of those two patients are sick, then maybe one of those, you know, one to two in the ICU and then maybe one of those on the ventilator. So we're not talking huge numbers here on the shore, but there is a percentage that we're starting to see now that need ICU care, and then a percentage of those ICU patients, those one or two, get on a ventilator periodically as well.
Okay. Okay, counsel?
Mr. Price DeVio.
Yep.
This morning, I was on a call, I believe, with Clay Stamp said, this is a marathon and not a sprint. And that's part of the problem that we're seeing in the community with people being a little bit lazier, a little bit more complacent with the masks and social distancing and things like that. But that really resonates with me. Nobody wakes up one day and just runs a marathon. And I'd like to thank your staff who are doing this marathon without any practice and the opportunity to get ready for it. They've just been thrown right into it, and I can't imagine the stress and the levels of exhaustion that they've gone through, but they're doing it and they're keeping us safe. And I have no fears that you're leading them well and monitoring that. So I want to thank you for keeping us safe by keeping staff who work so hard for us.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to our team, who are very deserving of those compliments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Laura, P.
I want to echo the other comments about just, I mean, we can't thank everybody in the community enough and including and especially, you know, hospital workers. So definitely thank you very much. And are you going to give us a little bit of an update on maybe this hospital that we've been waiting for for a long time?
Yes, ma'am. I intend to, absolutely.
Mr. Leisher?
I have nothing further.
Okay.
I'll echo DeVio's comments on this.
All right, no problem. So Ken, what are they breaking ground? Next week?
No, sir. But it remains my vision for the Regional Medical Center in Easton. I really believe, part of my vision is to break ground and build the new replacement hospital for Easton, the new Regional Medical Center out near the airport on Route 50. That vision remains strong, and we are doing everything we can to enable that vision to come true. And I know it doesn't seem that way from perhaps your seat, but as we go through what was an amazing introduction to tonight's meeting, and in a minute or less, you encapsulated worldwide pandemic, civil unrest, and domestic terrorism is what we're facing right today. And as you can imagine, that's taxing all of us. But even with that, we are still trying to persevere on our vision of creating that regional integrated healthcare system that meets the needs of our community that we serve. And there are a few enabling steps. As we've talked in the past, there are several enabling steps that really need to happen in order for us to realize the full vision, including the new hospital in Easton. A couple of those enabling steps are underway and in process as we speak, and they include the conversion of the hospital in Dorchester County in Cambridge to a freestanding medical facility and a medical office building. That project is underway. If you ride past Route 50 on your way to Ocean City, you'll see it. It's framed, it's two stories, and it is on time and on budget. We expect to be able to complete the construction project in Cambridge by the end of July of this year. And with the few months of getting that building prepared, getting instrumentation in and ready, we expect to move in late September of this year. That is an important enabling step to any regional vision because that needs to be in place because, as you will know, the freestanding medical facility does not have inpatient beds associated with it. It has observation beds, but it does not have inpatient beds. So part of our strategy has to be to account for that. And as we're building that freestanding medical facility, we are simultaneously preparing to move those beds into our Easton Hospital. Because again, the timeframe for any conversion of Easton from what exists today to a new hospital is likely five years from now till we open the doors. And there's years of preparation, there's years of approval, and then there's years of building the actual structure. So, but in order to do that, you've got to make these enabling steps work. Cambridge is one of those enabling steps. The other is our new models of care in Chestertown and realizing those models of care because at the end of the day, as we define the appropriate size and scope for Chestertown, that has a consequence on what types of patients come to Easton or the Regional Medical Center for their care. So by working through these decisions, by finalizing these actions and starting to move towards implementations of these models, that allows us to become more and more clear about what we need as part of a Regional Medical Center in Easton. Other things that help contribute to our ability to make that decision is where we put those behavioral health beds permanently. And as you'll know, that was a major concern of ours, that was a major consideration over the last year. And when the decision was made to relocate those beds to our Easton Hospital temporarily, that was the catapult for making sure that those beds would be in the Regional Medical Center as well. So it's these types of decisions that we really need to make that ultimately will have an impact on the size, the scope, and the extent of the services that are offered in the new hospital. So with all of that in place, you know, I'm pleased that we're progressing towards what I believe will be the vision for Shore Regional, which will be a unique set of care delivery models in each county that's complemented with the Regional Medical Center in Easton. But in order to get there, we've got to get these visions established in the communities that we serve, get the approvals, make these things happen, which we're in process of doing now, and then working towards then redefining the application, getting the approvals we need, and then building the new hospital. I know that's a long-winded answer, but that's really the path that we're working through in order to ultimately get the approvals and build the new hospital.
Yes, sir.
Could I follow up with that? So speaking of budgets, and because of the pandemic and there was a period of time where there wasn't elective surgeries because we didn't know if there was going to be a surge early on, and you said that probably only about 70% of, you know, people, you know, coming in and doing that. So, and I know after, you know, 10 years of doing this and working with you and trying to get this hospital done, that you work on razor-thin margins. You know, getting into the black is a difficult thing. So how, you know, has this pandemic really affected the bottom line of the hospital in so much as that it would delay the hospital project because of lower profit margins?
Fair question. The short answer, thank you. Fair question. The short answer I would give is we are financially strong at Shore. Even though we've gone through this pandemic, through the contributions of the federal government, through stimulus funding, UMS and Shore has received a lot of that stimulus funding to support some of the additional expenses or the loss in revenue associated with this pandemic. So we have benefited from the stimulus funding that has helped stabilize us. The other stabilizing factor truly is the Maryland rate-regulated system. The HSCRC has really helped stabilize funding for hospitals within the state of Maryland. It is still, though, incumbent upon us to make sure that we are managing our expenses and making sure that we're capturing as much revenue as possible to produce a bottom line. We still have a bottom-line goal of profitability this year, and we'll continue to have that expectation in years to come, and we're meeting those expectations today. I'd expect that we will continue to. And when the time comes for requesting approvals for the new Regional Medical Center, our bottom line will show that we have done what we need to do locally to support that new hospital. So I don't see our finances currently as being a barrier to us moving forward at this time, but we do need to continue to focus on them to make sure that they don't.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, Ken, I don't think we got any more questions.
Well, I don't have a question, Ms. Colley. I wanted to say thanks, Ken, very much again.
Yeah.
For holding on and being with us and basically being a straight shooter with us regarding the regional hospital plans right now. I remember seeing these plans from the very beginning, some 10-plus years now, and it appears after going through rolling delays and those periods of long, drawn-out pauses, we are reached another state where we have to, you know, basically wait again to see when the project can move forward. But I do understand why Shore Health is taking the position that they're taking as far as making sure that Cambridge and Chestertown, the freestanding medical facility in Cambridge and the new center in Chestertown is done and finished before going back to the MHCC regarding CON. So I do understand that I'm not happy about it, but I do understand the business side of why they're doing what they're doing. So Ken, I do appreciate you coming in and talking with us.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the entire council for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to providing as many updates as you need moving forward.
Okay, Ken, thanks again. And counsel is right. We can't, we couldn't have a better man in this position to give us honest answers because at the end of the day, we're going to have a phenomenal hospital, and you're going to be the driving force for us, and we totally understand some of the hurdles you're going through. we totally understand some of the hurdles you're going through. And all you have to do is let us know what's going on, what to expect. And I truly believe, I truly believe this hospital is going to be state of the art, because we are in a pandemic, and we are going to be more than adequately ready for this new hospital in five years because of all the stuff that we're up against now. So we can look at it as a positive note that the model might change a little bit because of what we're in. So I think in one aspect, we're going to have a better hospital than we would have had without this pandemic, because we'll be very prepared for it. Thank you.
Thank you again, and thank you for the council's support. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, good night. Okay, counsel. All right. Let's do our next thing on the agenda would be introduction of legislation. Counsel's next item on the agenda is introduction to legislation. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of the bill into the record, please?
A bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, zoning, subdivision, and land development, to provide a process for construction of a private pier as an accessory residential structure on a lot without a principal use under certain conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Cooper Smith, are you available? Mr. Cooper Smith?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Can you provide us some information on this legislation, please, and kind of go through a little bit? Because it's a unique situation. I support the legislation, and it's a very unusual, you know, opportunity to make this property work properly with this document.
I'm just going to be very brief, and then I'm going to ask Miguel, if he's still on the, at the meeting, to, this is a planning and zoning matter, but very briefly, this bill would authorize, under limited circumstances, a pier as an accessory structure on a parcel that does not have a principal residential structure. And so if you can imagine a small parcel on the water that maybe due to its small size does not have a residence on it, but nevertheless is owned by somebody who also owns an adjoining piece of property that does have a residence on it, with that person wanting to use the smaller parcel in conjunction with his or her larger parcel right next door, that's the situation that gave rise to the request for this legislation. And the goal is to come up with a process that somebody in that unusual situation could go through in order to be able to just put their goal out there of getting a pier on that smaller parcel. So I would ask Miguel, is Miguel on the?
Is Miguel, are you on?
I am on.
Okay, Miguel, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. If I can, if I can just show my screen, Parker.
Yep, I got you. Yep, we see you. Yep.
Okay, I'd like to show my screen, though. I've got to.
To the property.
Yeah, just found it here. One sec. Can you see that?
Yep.
All right, perfect. So to follow up on what Tony was saying, in our code, individual private peers are permitted on residential properties, but as Tony said, only if there is a principal residence on that property, or at the very least if there's footing and foundations in place and that the dwelling is diligently being pursued in terms of construction. In our zoning ordinance, if a parcel is divided into two or more non-contiguous sections by a public road, and this graphic here is an example of that, this is the Strasburger property, each section is considered a separate parcel for zoning purposes. So there are circumstances that have been created where a road divides a parcel into two separate ones, and where the parcel, one of the parcels, in this case, this would be the Riparian Lot on the water, is considered non-conforming due to lot size or lot width. So this, the way that our code is constructed now, the property owner of those two portions of that parcel that's divided by the road cannot construct a pier as an accessory to the residential, which is on the larger parcel that is not the Riparian parcel. So this tax amendment proposes to allow, in this circumstance, an accessory pier under certain conditions. One is that the parcels have to be in common ownership, which would be described in a single deed. And that common ownership, and that parcel, and that has to be, have been created since August 13, 1989, and that that date is when our critical area regulations went into effect. The division of the road, another condition is that the division of the road caused the Riparian Lot to be non-conforming. In this case, it's not conforming due to lot size, maybe lot width. The non-Riparian Lot, so in this example, the larger portion of that parcel where the house is on, that lot must contain a principal dwelling. And then another condition is that the lots, while they're under common ownership, are considered merged for zoning purposes. So you cannot unmerge those two, those two parcels under common ownership unless you remove the pier where the Riparian Lot, the lot on the water becomes legal and conforming. And then finally, the legislation states that in order to be able to construct that individual private pier on the Riparian parcel, you have to receive a special exception approval from the Board of Appeals to do it. This, this legislation, or the request for the tax amendment, was initiated by Mr. Strasburger. And the planning commission considered the text, the request at their November 4 and their December 2 meetings, and they ultimately recommended the adoption of the tax amendment. They recommended to the county council the adoption of the tax amendment as proposed by the staff, which is the draft legislation that you see in front of you. So I know it's a little bit complicated, but if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Miguel. Does counsel have any questions? It actually, it looks like it's complicated in words, but to me, it's very simple. A road goes through the property, and a piece of it is on the water, and they want to put a dock on it. So unfortunately, you know, that road separates the two, and you have done a great job trying to create a solution for this homeowner to put a dock on. So I commend you for that. And Tony, for working on trying to make this, make this property work for these homeowners. That's what we're there for, to try to make provisions and a positive outcome for some of these properties that are unique on the shore. So does counsel have any questions? Okay, so at this time, thank you, Miguel and Tony. Because counsel's meeting is virtually environment this evening, I'm going to ask Madam Secretary to please conduct a roll call to introduce the legislation.
Mr. Kettler, yes?
Yes.
Mr. DeValeo?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Abstain.
Okay, we have three yeses, a no, and an abstain. So that means it passes. So Mr. Moran, would you please announce the bill number and public hearing date and the time for the legislation, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number 1468, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 9 at 6:30 PM.
I'd just like to make a clarification. It only takes one council member to introduce a piece of legislation. So we didn't need three to introduce it. But that's how many did introduce it. But it only actually takes one council member to introduce the piece of legislation. So it wasn't that it passed.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Ms. Price. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is discussion of a proposed assessment to taxpayers during COVID-19. And I think Mrs. Lane is going to bring us up to date on what she's, as far as the county finance director. And she's going to bring us up to date on some of the good things that we're going to be doing for the taxpayer. Angela, are you available?
Yes, counsel, I am.
Okay, okay. So tell us something good.
In April, last April, 2020, I came to the county council to see if there were items that the council would approve to assist our citizens who are dealing with the COVID-19 public health emergency. At that point, I would not have anticipated that we would still be dealing with the public health emergency and the financial impacts of that emergency, but we are. In April, the council approved two areas of assistance for taxpayers. One has to do with sewer payments. The council approved allowing partial payments for any amount at any time on accounts, and to waive all interest and penalties for the period of April through December 2020. That period has expired. So we still have people who are dealing with financial hardships associated with the pandemic. So I am requesting that the council extend the waiver of interest and penalties on sewer bills through June of 2021. This will not change any properties that will go into the May 2021 tax sale. In April, council approved only sending sewer properties to tax sale if they had an unpaid balance as of December 31, 2019. So that is a year ago. Everyone should have been able to get caught up to at least that point by now, and they were due then. So I'm still comfortable that that should not be an undue hardship for anyone. But I would like counsel to consider extending the waiver of interest and penalties on sewer bills at least through June of 2021. It would extend it for an additional six months. Just to give you an idea of the impact of that, in a normal year, we collect, the sanitary districts, collect between $10,000 to $13,000 in penalties and interest. Our overall sewer collections are in excess of $2 million. This is not a significant income stream for the sanitary districts. So it will not present a true hardship to the sanitary districts, but I think it may assist our citizens, as they are probably struggling to pay some bills right now. The other item I would like counsel to consider, which we started during the pandemic, was allowing real property taxpayers to pay their real property tax bills in, well, not even in installments, to pay any amount as often as they chose. So I would like to continue accepting partial payments on real property tax bills indefinitely. That process would not change the ultimate due dates for property tax bills. It would not change when properties would go into tax sale. That is in state code. But I believe by allowing partial payments may assist people as they're budgeting, so they don't have to come up with half their bill in July and the other half by December. If they can make monthly payments, that may be of an assistance. It won't keep them out of tax sale. We can't change that. But it is something that I believe will assist our taxpayers going forward to help pay their property tax bills on time. So my recommendation is that the county council extend the waiver of interest and penalties on sewer bills through June 2021, and to continue to allow partial payments on real property taxes and sewer bills indefinitely.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
I would make a motion, if that's what you'd like, to take our finance director's recommendations for those two things. I would also just like to mention that there is a piece of legislation that has been prefiled that would not allow us to put an owner-occupied house into tax sale during, under a state of emergency. We'll see what happens in Annapolis with that one. But that is something that has been prefiled. So basically, you couldn't throw somebody out of their house in the middle of all of the pandemic, which, you know, to an extent makes some sense. But anyway, I'll make the motion to accept her recommendations.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Mr. Counsel?
Yes.
Mr. DeValeo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Okay, the next thing we have on the agenda is discussion on pending General Assembly legislation. So I met with staff a couple, about, I don't know, maybe a week ago or so. And we've got obviously a unique year with the pandemic and session and all these bills, how they're going to be coming out. And I think there's going to be hundreds of bills coming out. So we're trying to figure out, you know, a way that we can possibly, you know, do some type of work session, or we can come up with a element with Mr. Cooper and Clay and staff on how we need to, you know, when all these bills start coming to us on a local level, how we can, you know, sort of take a look at them, and for everybody to get a fair treatment on looking at them and, you know, trying to, you know, communicate what they like, what they don't like. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cooper Smith to sort of help me sort of what we're trying to, you know, create a system here, trying to create a system to try to help staff and time and all these bills that are coming in to try to retrofit a mechanism so we all can be, you know, looking at these bills. And we have, we have two bills on the floor now from Johnny Mounts that he is asking for support on. So there's a few, a few things here we need to kind of address. So Tony, could you, could you jump in here and help me try to talk to counsel on maybe how to structure this a little bit in a way that, you know, sort of helps everybody with their time, you know what I mean? And yet, and yet, you know, make sure that everybody has a say to it, you know?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
So as you said, staff looked at this issue about how we could go about handling all the various requests for General Assembly legislation, and came up with some ideas. And these are just for discussion purposes.
Right, right. Right, right. This is just for discussion. That's it.
Exactly, exactly. So we're hoping that the council tonight, if the council wants to talk about all these things further, that's fine. These were just some of the suggestions that we came. So the first one would be just to have a standing agenda item that would be titled Discussion of Pending General Assembly Legislation. And that must be a regular item on our, on the council's agenda during, during session, during General Assembly session. And this appears to be a best practice among some of the other counties. One of the staff members reached out to the other counties, and this kind of thing appears to be what some of the other ones do. And then in terms of adding specific bills, any council member in that council member's discretion could say, okay, at the upcoming discussion, I'd like to talk about Bill Number 1, 2, 3. And then the person would make sure that a digital copy of that is included in advance, so everybody has a chance to review it. And then, just to be clear, at, at any time, any council member, if they want to, could submit their own individual letter on any piece of legislation.
Correct.
That, that would just come from them individually, not as a group. But the standing agenda item would allow council group to come up with consensus on different, different pieces of legislation. And then if we had a time-sensitive decision that was needed, we'd have a couple of different options. We could schedule a conference call, or take other steps consistent with the Open Meetings Act in order to have a group discussion. Or again, individual council members could send individual letters if there's a time limit. And then, since we get, the county gets all these requests from different people to look at different pieces of legislation, constituents, general assembly member, interest groups, we would be trying to pass those requests along to council, so that council could then sift through them and decide how, you know, which ones you all wanted to look at. And we would just, we would be, we would be directing people to reach out to you all, and we'd be forwarding that to you all. And then the staff would be available for any kind of evaluation of any, of any piece of legislation that council's interested in, or any council member's interested. So if you wanted us to look at something and give an analysis, we could do that, provide that to the whole group.
Yep. Thank, thank you, Tony. And, and, and council, all we're trying to, all we're trying to do is find a, a sort of happy meeting, because, Mrs. Price, I, I know you represent us very, very well in Annapolis. I know that each, each week, all the, really from, from this point forward, day to day, there's new bills coming in. So we, we sort of thought, and staff thought, you know, if we could kind of regulate these somehow, we can come up with a mechanism, they, they wouldn't hit us all at one time like they did last year. And that's, that's, that's all we're trying to do. Even though Tony's right, each council member can introduce and bring forward any, any legislation they want. The, the point of it is, is just trying to keep it regulated every week, and trying to keep, give staff some direction on how we want to do this.
If I could speak to that. So this is the main reason that we have Mako, because they have the resources. We're talking about 2,500 or 3,000 bills a year. And maybe some of the larger counties are able to have dedicated staff to go through that. But we certainly, the smaller counties don't have those resources, which is why I think Mako is so incredibly valuable, especially to us. And that they focus on legislation that has a direct effect on the counties, whether that is a state mandate, either asking us to spend, it's not always about money, but asking us to spend money or things that would cause revenues to be taken away as, from us. So I've noticed in the past couple of years, it seems like more and more things, people wanting to come to council to get our opinion to send a letter. And I think it's gotten a little bit more, more volume with that. So I would hope that the approach that we would take is that certainly anything that is going to be introduced by our specific delegation, Delegate Mouts, Delegate Adams, Senator Eckert, absolutely, those are things that are being introduced on behalf of Talbot County. We should absolutely be engaged with, with our delegation to support, or not, but most likely, they're going to be introducing things that we would be supportive of, and we should definitely be involved with that. But there's another way that we can keep track of, of, of 3,000 bills. I would also say that things like having to do with our detention center, or our sheriff, or our waterman, or any of these groups, they all have lobby groups where, you know, there's this Sheriff's Association, where Sheriff Gamble gets together with everybody else. And occasionally, those groups may come to us for additional support, but they already have their, their resources to go and give their opinion. And they're the experts in the field. I mean, if we remember, you know, last year, when we were, there was some national legislation that we were asked to take an opinion on. And really, we need to make sure that what we get involved with is our area of expertise. So if it's something having to do with the detention center, then we want Terry Kokolos really to be taking the lead on that with his group. So I guess all of that is to say that we should not be getting involved with every possible piece of legislation, and trying to do this on a weekly basis, and keep track of not only hundreds, but thousands of bills. What I will share is also that typically this time of year, about 100 bills have been prefiled in Annapolis. This year, I can tell you it's 900. So we are on track again to have another 2,500 or 3,000 bills. And the Talbot County Council nor any county council should not be getting involved in any, in any piece of legislation. They should be things that have a very specific, specific, direct impact on the county. There are things that, you know, something like Mako would not get involved with things that don't affect us. I mean, while we all may have an opinion on a social issue, and that would be something that an individual council member would write letters on, but we all have different opinions on things like that. So I just want to be very careful about really kind of opening it up to just anything. I think the things that come before us that we should consider, or that a council member would bring forward, or a member of the public would bring to the council, needs to make sure that it has some type of guideline, that, that it really has a direct impact on, on county, on the county itself, and not just a political matter, not just such, something that's just an opinion. But it needs to have a direct impact on us for, for us to get involved, because Mako is going to take care of the vast majority of that. And out of the hundreds of bills that over the last six years, Mako's taken positions on, I probably only bring two or three to the council, because Mako is really our advocacy group for the vast majority of bills that affect counties. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Council.
Well, I will, I will say in response to that, that yes, there are well over 2,500, 3,000 bills filed on the annual basis in Annapolis. But certainly, this council, this body is not asked to give an opinion on 2,300 bills. Last year, the Talbot County Waterman had a packet of bills, I think some 19 bills, that were directly related to the fishing and industry here in Talbot County and the, in the eastern shore. So they asked us to give an opinion on those, on those matters. Certainly, yes, we should only be looking at those matters that are brought before us. We should not be going into the packet and grabbing things that are directed to Garrett County and Allagren County. But we want to make sure that we're only addressing those requests that are brought to us by other industry here in Talbot County, or citizens here in Talbot County, or the elected officials here in Talbot County that are asking us to take an opinion on. So whether you do this once a month through session, or once every other month through session, it's probably not a bad idea to do it that way, give yourself, to kind of break it up into bite-sized pieces. I know during the last couple of years, we were doing Bill Night. That can be a heavy lift to unpack all of that information, and try to have testimony from citizens and from industry. It can be a very daunting time, and a very long evening for council to endure. So maybe breaking it up into bite-sized pieces during the session may allow us to digest it a bit easier. So, but as long as there was matters that are being brought to us for our opinion on, I would have no problem with it. And if it's being addressed, you know, once or twice, once a month, once every other month, I think that, that would be appropriate.
Okay. All right, Mr. Pack, appreciate it. Mr. DeVilleo?
Oh, so yeah, looking through the recommendations from the staff, I, I like those. I could see where some things can be a little hairy. Number six, staff evaluation of bills. Council may refer any legislative items to staff in order to get staff's feedback, analysis, and opinions. So, you know, we could end up dividing departments. But, you know, and I don't see anything where we would reach out to any municipalities to see what their opinions are, and if, if we should be sending letters together. You'd sort of think that you would, if, if, if we're getting involved, I don't know. I mean, I guess if the state's involved and the county's involved, you'd think the municipalities would be involved as well. But I've never seen that done. Somebody on here, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't believe I've ever seen, seen that. So I, I'm not real sure quite what we're getting into here. I, I thought this was more of a discussion of, of sort of, to explain how we would do it. Like if, if somebody comes to us and says, hey, there's a bill, and you got to vote tonight, and send this letter today, then we would come into the following council meeting and explain what our actions were that led to that outcome of the previous letter that had been sent. I sort of hoped, I, I thought that that's what this would be. And I, I sort of hope that we would all work together, and you'd reach out to the other council members before you would want a discussion on a bill, so that you have an idea if it was going to go anywhere with the council ahead of time. But otherwise, I, I think the staff did a great job of putting this together. I just think that we should probably be a little bit more cautious than we have been past, and make sure we are very transparent after the fact, if we have to do something in that regard.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. LeSher?
Well, two years ago, of course, we had a problem with this, and it created an Open Meetings Act violation. And we've needed to find a way of making sure that the public sees what we're doing. And I appreciate this effort at creating that mechanism that, that creates both that public visibility to our actions, and at the same time gives us the nimbleness that we, that, that is sometimes required in order to be able to have a timely response to a bill. So I love the effort.
Thank you, Mr. LeSher. And I, I, I agree with, you know, all of us. All, all of us are talking the same language. We're going to have a lot thrown at us, and we're going to try to give council, or give, give staff some direction on when this stuff is coming in. So I guess we'll just keep it to, to, to open, keep it open. And Clay, would, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I think it's, we're just trying to work hard to help council be as efficient as possible, and bring you some, some ideas to consider. I mean, clearly, the state legislative process is fast-moving. And, you know, I, I think creating a process to give the right piece of legislation to the council to be able to either recommend, or to take a position is something that we're just trying to give you some thoughts around. Right, that's all.
Okay, okay. And, and I, I think everybody's got their heart into this. Go, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Why does this require legislation? This is just a formality, as far as how are we going to handle taking in bill requests during, during the open session in Annapolis? Why does it require legislation?
Oh, Corey, I, I don't know if you're reacting to what I said, but I didn't mean anything. We're simply trying to provide some recommendations about how we would, you know, how you might want to manage, or weighing in on state legislation, that's all.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. All right, so, um, okay, so what, what we, staff, staff upkeep, that's kind of work in progress. Is, is that fair? Is that fair to say, Clay?
Yes.
It's work in process, work in progress. Okay, um.
Mr. President, I believe we do have two bills.
Well, I was, I was getting ready to go that route. Okay, so, so I, I've, I've got two bills before us in the request of Johnny Mouts, okay? I think everybody has seen them. One is a deer and turkey bill, and hunting on Sunday is one of them. And the other one is an energy bill for Eastern Utilities. Madam Secretary, could you read the bill into the record?
Wait, 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 wait. Where's that on the agenda? That we were taking this up tonight for, for matter of discussion, those two bills?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, it's, it's, it's on the, it's on the agenda.
Where?
Well, it just, it just says Discussion of General Assembly. But I don't believe these, unless these have bill hearings in the next two weeks, we don't really have to take them up at this time.
Okay, so you don't want to put them on the record? You don't want to put them on the record?
My question is, did Delegate, did Delegate Mouts give us bill hearing dates yet? Because General Assembly doesn't even open till tomorrow. So I doubt his bills are up, you know, in the first two weeks, but I really honestly don't know that. I don't see bill hearing dates. And there's no bill numbers here yet, so we really can't look them up.
Yeah, you're, we're about to body the same process we just finished talking about.
Yeah.
Send the letter on before we had a chance to, to review it.
I, I would assume Delegate Mouts would have let us know if he had a bill hearing already scheduled for this week. I don't even see bill numbers on, on his bills yet. So I certainly am comfortable to hold. Again, I, I think we need to take positions on Delegate Mouts on his bills, but I, let's put them on our agenda for two weeks from now.
That's fine. That's fine. Jessica, are you, are you on? Jessica, are you on?
She's not able to unmute, but we'll make sure.
Okay, so let's just make sure, because I think, I think Johnny sent some bills over.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, huh?
Yes, sir. We're, we're adding to the 26, if that's your.
Okay, no problem, no, no problem. We'll just add, we'll add them, and, and we'll, and we'll deal with this next meeting, and, and everybody can take a look at them, and, provide some comments on them, and we'll go from there.
President Callahan, Delegate Mouts did indicate that he believed the renewable energy bill was scheduled for a hearing on January 14th at 1:30 before the Economic Matters Committee, but we can certainly send a letter after the fact.
Okay, you, you mean, send a letter of, of, of support with that? Is that's what he's asking, correct?
He, his, his staff person just asked for council letters. You know, it's up to you how, if you choose to support or not.
I, I got you. So, 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 so at this stage, council, it, 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 we're, we're going to do this individually, correct? Is that, is that, is that the way we should do that?
Mr. Callahan, if, if the bill hearing is in committee, because it goes to committees first, and yes, it is true, they are starting some of the committees, you know, in the next couple of days. If you send a letter after the fact, it's pretty much meaningless as far as the committee, because it either gets out of committee or it does not. So it does no good to send a letter after the fact. So what we may have to do on this particular one is, you're correct, maybe we'll send letters individually to get there in time for the 14th. And then everything else, we need to keep track of those, those bill hearing dates as they come to us. Because if you don't get it in before the committee, dates as they come to us, because if you don't get it in before the committee, it's absolutely meaningless.
Have have any have have any of the rest of us been uh been been briefed on on this bill? I I have, uh, if if we do, uh, as as Mrs. Price indicates, uh, want to be nimble uh on this opportunity and and enact as a council this evening.
I I'm I'm, you know, I've I've looked over it myself. I've looked over actually both of them. Um, and um, you know, it's 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 up to council. I'm I'm okay with sending a letter. If we wouldn't just send the letter with Eastern Utilities and not the Sunday Hunting, that's fine. I I mean, I.
Would would you like me to 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 give the brief rundown on on this one as as I'm understand it?
Absolutely, Mr. Lesher, please.
So this renewable energy portfolio standard, uh, all of all of our electric companies are required to provide a certain percentage of our energy through renewables, through wind and solar, principally. And and for those who um who who don't generate that percentage of their uh of their energy through renewables, they must go out on the open market to purchase those renewable energy. And if you are a big regional energy company, uh, Pepco, uh, Exelon, um, you can you can you've got market power uh to be able to 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 bid on the price, to be able to buy in bulk and to get the price down uh for your customers. If you're a small municipal utility company, such as Eastern Utilities, uh, you don't have that market buying power. And so that what this does is create a a separate standard for this municipal. This is incidentally a standard, they're not making up something new here. This standard already exists for Maryland's rural rural electric cooperatives, of which there are two. Um, and so it is simply taking that playbook that already exists for the rural electric cooperatives and adds them to the municipal uh electric companies uh such as Eastern Utilities. It will certainly be a benefit to uh the Eastern Utilities customers uh who, of course, are all Talbot County constituents. Uh, and for that reason, I I'm prepared to support this legislation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lesher. Um, and and I appreciate your explanation, and I I want to make sure that council understands we're just trying to be transparent, we're trying to throw everything out there and and help our delegates and help our senators and all. So this is just the beginning of what we're going to be dealing with for the next couple of months, you know what I mean? With, like you said, Mrs. Price, you know, these these dates that, you know, that if if there's hearings the 14th or 15th or next, you know, we're 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 going to be struggling to find out when we should send these support letters. So I I just want to make sure council understands staff is doing the best they can to give us information, so we need to respect staff and and help them um make this transition um smooth and and positive, you know what I mean? Because we're we're all doing our best, because, look, we only got two, and you said we've got 2,500 uh or something that are going to come to us and we're going to be looking at, so let's everybody just be patient, okay? So so.
There'll be a total total of 2,500. They won't all be coming to us and nor.
I hope not, I hope not, I hope not. So, but do we want a support letter? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Price.
No, I was gonna say, as as far as we're not going to be, just a moment, Mr. Pack, Mr. Pack, I was speaking, just a moment. Um, we're not going to be having public hearings on every bill that we take a position on, and I think the public needs to understand that. We do need to react. Um, we've we've been elected to represent you. Um, so with something like this, we're not violating any procedure that we're trying to put in place. We are doing this in open forum, we are having a discussion. Um, I really appreciate Mr. Lesher's explanation of that. Um, he knows a little bit about it coming from, you know, the the Eastern Council and is very familiar with utilities. Um, but people shouldn't expect that they're going, we're going to be having a public hearing on the bills that we take positions on. Um, that's that's not the process here. Annapolis has public hearings. If we're being asked for a letter of support, um, then we're going to be generally making that decision. We're not going to be holding public hearings on all that. There's just simply not time for that. Um, so I will second Mr. Lesher's motion to support this bill.
There was no motion made. So I'm just I'm just I'm just I'm just very troubled by the fact that we just went through about 15 minutes of discussion about setting up a format about how we were going to going forward, handle requests from citizens and from groups regarding pending legislation. We just went through that for about 15, 20 minutes. And now, right after that, after they're having that discussion, we're saying, let's admit these bills in, which I haven't I haven't seen, I haven't seen them. I haven't I haven't, I wasn't briefed on them.
Um, they've they've been in our granticus.
15 minutes of of dialogue, having Mr. Cooper Smith explain the process. Why? Why 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 don't we waste all that time?
So so I don't I don't believe we've wasted our time. I think we talked about a process if an individual council member or a citizen wanted to bring something to us. This is our delegate, and he's got a bill hearing date, and he has put this forth. This has been in granticus since Friday, so you had ample opportunity to read it and reach out, and I'm sorry, and reach out to Delegate Mounts for an explanation.
It was not mentioned as an agenda item for council to consider taking a position on. It was not.
Okay, but we're going to get bills to come before us, and as long as we're doing it in public, we are not violating any process. And this is our delegate who is asking for a letter, and I don't think that's inappropriate at all. I think the process.
We're going right back where I thought we were trying to move away from, but um again, I just want my objection to be noted on the record, Mr. Stamp. Um, this is not on the agenda, but was not given to council for a uh make a decision on supporting it, whether it's from Delegate Mounts or not. It was not on the council's agenda to send a letter of support for this this legislation. It was not.
Discussion of pending General Assembly legislation.
That is correct.
Is that is that?
We just went through as far as how we were going to handle setting it up.
There are.
I don't think that's that specific. Was it was it? It was not that specific. It's literally the agenda item says, discussion of pending General Assembly legislation. It actually does not say how to discuss pending General Assembly legislation. So we're doing both things, and may maybe we should not have discussed how to discuss it, but it absolutely, as I read it, is an agenda item, and it is included in granticus.
Correct, and under, when you click on it, there are three items under discussion of pending General Assembly legislation, so I think it was properly introduced to the agenda.
And I also take a take into consideration that we just discussed that we would have to be nimble at how we respond to these, and that sometimes we may have to voice, send out a letter, and then come into a council meeting to discuss how that was done, which is still appropriate action. So, Mr. Pack, I need clarification. What are we doing wrong here?
All right, so so it look.
I'm not going to break any rules here. If if we're doing something wrong, I see this on the agenda. I I'm absolutely confused and lost here.
Well, I I'm I'm not confused and I'm not lost, okay? So I I think we need to move on. The whole reason we put this on for discussion is for this reason, so we could act like five adults of of council go through this, because we've got, we we can't even do two, and we've got 900, you know, so, I mean, that's kind of piss poor, really. So here's what we need to do, okay? Um, I'm going to make a recommendation. Uh, Mr. Lesher made a recommendation to of of a support letter, okay? I think this was properly introduced. We can't get any more transparent in discussing this, and we have a person in Annapolis that's bringing us everything, and we've got staff here, and we're not looking good in front of staff. Okay, so we got to stop all this bickering and getting into the weeds with stuff, okay? So let's send a support. It's 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 the 14th, it's Thursday, and let and let's support it.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Do we do we want uh do we want Mr. Cooper Smith to address Mr. DeVilleo's question?
I don't I don't, I mean, do we need to?
Just to check, he asked the question, are we doing procedural anything wrong? It's it's probably.
We're not, we're not. I mean, we're all talking there, we're on TV, we're talking, what else can we do?
I I'm I'm happy just to briefly jump in. I think one of the the sources of confusion here might be that, as Mr. Lesher pointed out in the past, when these kinds of discussions about the General Assembly bills became an issue with open meetings, after that, as as I recall, there was a a very strong concerted effort to literally list every single possible bill that might be considered that day. And so, you know, it could be that what we're, that the source of, you know, not confusion here, but just that what people are thinking about are what those agendas looked like at that time. And I know that at that time, we were really trying to act out of an abundance of caution and go to that that extreme level of just literally showing everything in the agenda. Some of those agendas were pretty long. They had 30 bills on there.
Right.
And so that, I think, is is what is causing this discussion perhaps. And, you know, the 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 best practice is it's a list everything, but is that is that required? Uh, I'm not sure that it's necessarily required, but it it that is what we did in the past, and, you know, that if we're comfortable moving ahead right now as as a group, um, and if something needs to be done, you know, by, uh, I guess, council could send individual individual letters. Um, if you, you know, want to set up just a conference call, meeting uh tomorrow, um, at the end of the day, um, we could advertise that. Um, or you could just move it, or you can move ahead now. I, you know, I don't have the, you know, an open meetings decision uh on this particular issue in front of me. What the Open Meetings Act requires is reasonable advance notice um in your in your agenda. And as was pointed out, we do have a discussion of pending General Assembly legislation on there. Um, so we have provided notice to anyone out there that we will we will be talking tonight about, you know, General Assembly legislation. So, you know, one could tune in to listen to this discussion. But if if out of an abundance of caution, you know, you you all wish to um uh do something different and wait and and deal with this one bill on an individual basis, um, we can, you know, you can do that.
What I would say to that is that there is no way that we can get through the General Assembly and list every single bill on the Friday before the Tuesday that we meet, because bills come up quickly. So we can't, as long as we are discussing this, like Mr. Callahan said, on TV and on Zoom and on the phone call, and it was properly listed that we would be discussing General Assembly legislation, which I think is probably the way we should list things, and the public needs to understand that it can be added or subtracted to that list um pretty much on a moment's notice. So we can't possibly anticipate three, four, five days in advance what General Assembly legislation we may need to discuss. So I have no problem moving forward with this, particularly because, as Mr. Lesher um explained, this is modeled on um uh rural, um, uh, you said it, uh, the rural, it's just the, and it now includes, it's the same legislation, and it just includes the municipalities. So I don't think that they have reinvented the wheel here. I certainly trust our elected official Delegate Mounts would not be putting forth something that is um not appropriate and um and necessary uh for um our citizens, and and half of our Talbot County citizens live in the town of Easton, so this affects half, probably half of our citizenry. Um, I think it was properly introduced, and we need the ability, as long as we are in public. Um, we we can't give 24 hours' notice, we can't give 72 hours' notice. We need to move forth as these bills come before us. Um, and this has been in granticus since Friday. If any council member needed to reach out to Delegate Mounts, they have had uh four days to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Price. So um, so we're we're back to a support letter for Eastern Utilities. Is everybody on board?
Callahan, I I will, for clarity, I will uh move, uh explicitly move for a support letter uh from this council at this time. Um, you know, given the alternatives that Mr. Cooper Smith laid out for us.
Yes, sir.
In a regular legislative now session now, we have people who are expecting to hear from us at this time and who are undoubtedly watching what we are doing now. If we set up a special phone call, that to me is a second best. I think when we can, we should be doing these in our regular legislative sessions or in a workshop designated for that purpose.
I I agree, I agree. We're we're just trying to find a mechanism for this. That's all we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
You know, and it's it's.
I'll offer a motion for the letter.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Let me speak to it before you call the vote, and let me say that I I certainly support the um the the legislation. My my objection, Mr. Callahan, um, was how we were going about doing it. Uh, so, um, but I certainly understand that things do pop up at the last moment that's going to require us to take action on. Um, we're all on the record as being quote unquote flexible with those issues going forward. I'm glad to hear that, and I won't, you know, um, speak any further about it. But um, again, my my concern was the fact that uh we had gone on through the discussion on how we were going to handle these things going forward as far as putting them on the agenda. We're not going to see 900 bills, and 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 again, last year was um was a bit unusual that we had a pack of bills coming from the Waterman Association. Um, I I would say at best, we're asked to comment on somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe five or 10 bills a year.
Right, right.
Last year, we were asked to to comment on quite a few, and and the bulk of that came from the Waterman's Association. So, um, but again, my my objection was not in any way due to the bill. I think that it is something that we can certainly support, I do support. It was just that going forward, if we're going to handle this in in a unified way, let's do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack, I appreciate it.
Are we keeping somebody from something?
What?
If we could all mute, or or there's a lot.
That was that was that was me, I just turned it off, great.
Okay, so we we've got we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Um, aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay, we've got a motion and a second um in all in favor. Okay, now we're moving on to bigger and better things. Mr. Clay Stamp is going to give his report. Clay, are you still there?
It would help if I unmuted.
Okay, I thought you I thought you might have passed out or something, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm right here.
Don't don't go on me now, don't go on me now.
We're 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 here. Following your board and committee appointments, following your um recommendations to council for your consideration appointment. The first one is Economic Development Commission requesting the appointment of Amy Kreiner to represent the Chamber of Commerce. Would you like me to go through these and at the end, uh, make a determination, or do you want to do them one by one?
Counsel, what does counsel prefer? Would you like, he's got about one, two, three, four, five, he's got like six line items. How about if somebody has um a a a question on one of them, please, please, you know, um, speak out?
Okay.
Okay, is that okay, counsel?
So we'll do them as a group?
Yes, and if somebody's got a got an issue with something, say something.
Thank you. The second one is Emergency Services Advisory Board requesting the appointment of Shirley Bucci to represent the St. Michael's District. The third item is the Talbot County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council requesting the appointment of Anne Semper's representing Midshore Behavioral Health, and Andrea Kelly Freeman, CEO of Life's Energy Wellness Center to the Talbot County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council. The next one is to the Tourism Board requesting the appointment of Amy Kreiner to represent to represent the Chamber of Commerce. And that completes the recommendations for council's consideration.
Mr. Counsel, move for the appointments.
DeVio, second then.
I only have one question. We have the same lady being appointed to two different boards. Does that, anybody have a problem with that? Or are we just happy that she's willing to do two?
I think by virtue of her position with the Chamber of Commerce, she's appropriately appointed, and I believe that she's filling positions that were filled by her predecessor, Al Silverstein, on those same two boards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lesher.
We, we got, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
And the next item I have for council's consideration is requesting council to approve holding all council meetings virtual through February of 2021. In light of the uncertainty surrounding the pandemic and presently the growing numbers, that would be our recommendation for your consideration.
It takes a lot of work to set this up. I will gladly make a motion that we maintain virtual for another month.
Second. Thank you, Mr. DeVio and Mr. Lesher. Motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Hang on, I just have a question.
Okay, no problem.
Should we, instead of just saying to end at the end of February, should we say until we decide not to, rather than having to bring this back up in six more weeks? Because I don't know that we're going to be out of this in six weeks. Would, would we want to extend this until further notice?
Well, I think if it's, if it's okay with you, Mrs. Price, I, I think that's probably what we'll do, is what we're doing now. We'll keep pushing it out just a little bit when we're meeting with the Health Department and staff and understanding where, where we're at. So, you know, hopefully, it might be a little better the end of, of, of first of March. But I, I think we'll, we'll, we'll keep pushing out as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. The next item, I'm, I'm going to ask our county engineer, Ray Clark, to speak up on an issue. He's with us this evening to discuss a request by the town of Oxford asking us to remove recycling bins from their park on the causeway next to tennis, the tennis courts as a result of inappropriate dumping of household trash at the site. Ray, could you, could you finish briefing out the council on this, please?
Mr. Clark, are you on? Are you off? You're, you're on mute. Take it off mute if you're on, Mr. Clark. All right, Mr. Clark might have went to sleep, okay? Okay, okay, let's, let's move on, we need to move on.
So I, I can finish out the briefing on that, so.
Okay, no problem.
So the town of Oxford, Cheryl called up, they, they, they have had a problem with inappropriate dumping of household waste at the recycling site. They've put containers there, they put more containers there. They've made a decision to remove the household trash containers and requested that we remove the recycling containers from that site. It is a recommendation of our Public Works Director that we erect a sign at that site and directing people to take their recycling to the, the Midshore Waste Transfer Station at Barker's Landing Road. And we're, we're asking for council support in, in the Public Works Department doing that.
Okay, that sounds good. I need a motion.
This is so unfortunate that we have to do this. We shouldn't be making it harder for people to recycle. And I hope that we can find an alternative location for this, for these recycling containers in the near future. Somebody, somebody, I totally get why Oxford is making this request. And, and somebody has been behaving badly down there and, and has spoiled this for, for all of our neighbors, and, and shame on them. That said, we have, we have a reasonable request from the municipality. I think that we need to find an alternative. And so I'll, I'll move for the actions recommended by staff.
Second.
Mr. Lesher, Kim, I hate this, and I can't believe it. I, I will second it. I, I'm so disappointed that we have to remove them. But hope, since we're not tearing anything down, hopefully, we can come up with a plan to put it back and cameras, something like that, I don't know.
But I would, I would agree, I would agree with both of you. I mean, that, that is, it's, it's, it's sad, it's sad, you know what I mean? So hopefully, they can wake up and we can do something, find something here in the next, you know, in the, in the springtime or summertime. And these residents, okay, they, they, they need a place to go. They don't need to go all the way back to Easton, you know what I mean? And it's sad, and it's, it's very unfortunate. I agree with you, both of you, it's.
So was there, was there any sign placed there before? Did we, did Oxford ask us to place a camera there before, before we just remove it? Have there been any interim steps to try to stop the bad behavior?
I'm not sure they have. When they put in the trash cans, and it, it seems like they've exhausted their efforts. I mean, when you put trash cans there for people to put trash into, and they're still not able to do it.
It's my understanding that they did take effort. And staff will continue to seek other avenues. But in the interim, we just are asking for your support to, to take this action. We'll continue to work on trying to find a place down that way.
Um, I think, I think we got a motion second, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Counsel, President Members of Council. Next item that I have is a request from the Department of Emergency Services to utilize state homeland security grant funding for the purchase of a software, of software packages. Requesting council approved, use state homeland security grant funds to procure two software packages. First Watch in the amount of $36,796, which will integrate data feeds from CAD, 911 telephone call processing software, and patient care reporting system. The second pa, package is from Academy Analytics in the amount of $26,000, which will provide real-time integration with the First Watch system. The total cost of both packages are $62,796. Again, fully funded by a grant. The, the, the analytics software is a sole source purchase that is tied to our existing software. And then the First Watch, we're piggybacking on a Calvert County contract. Asking for some approval.
Okay, I got, I got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thank you, counsel. Owen, Owen, are you on?
Owen, are you on? If, if you're on, take, take yourself off mode, unmode yourself. Yeah?
Okay, great. And are you here for Rich Owen?
I think so, I think he was trying to get on, but he couldn't.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, the next item I have is a, a, a request from the Hognet Golf Course to utilize FY21 contingency funds to replace, replace pump and repair the pump house at the Hognet Golf Course irrigation, irrigation system. And I've asked Owen and Rich to explain that in detail. So Owen, you want to go forward with that, please?
At this point, our pumps have failed, and they need to be replaced. So that being said, the, the pump station itself is 130. And with that, the intake pipe needs to be replaced because it's the original one from 1976, and the bottom is rotted out. So we take in a lot of sediment and different things. That's 51,000. And then with that, to get the old station out, the, the building was built around the pump station. So the pump station building needs to be replaced as well.
Okay. And how, and how much is the building?
I'm sorry, the, I'm estimating the building to be around 50,000.
And Owen, you said you have all this money in contingency right now? And you're, well, you're leisure or county's contingency?
That would be the county that just, and we have Angela on as well, but she's, she's certified that we have the funds in contingency. We come out of our general fund contingency.
Out of general fund, okay. You're looking at, you're looking at roughly about $230,000 in total?
231.
231. Okay, I make the motion, I would go ahead and do it out of contingency.
I have a second.
DeVio, second.
So was this something that was ever asked? I mean, I understand failing systems and emergencies and all of that. But was, was this something that was ever asked for in the budget in the last couple of years in anticipation, and we just didn't approve it yet? Or did it just fail?
Yeah, this was part of the project that I've been asking for probably the last six or seven years to replace the system because of its age.
So the other, the other thing I would like to add is that this is a first phase and a two-phase project. This is about the replacement of the entire irrigation system at Hognet Golf Course, which is, I don't know how many years old, and it is literally falling apart. But this has to be done before the spring, the pump, the pump piece. The distribution system, we're going to come back during budget and talk about handling next year with council. But we want, but we, we need to move forward right now in order to repair the pumps and replace the pump house. But again, I want you to know it's a part of a two-phase project.
Great, great. And so we've got a motion and a second. Did I hear Mr. Durham say that Rich is on the line? Would he like to say anything?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm here, but I, I mean, Owen has said it, you know, there's nothing more to add. It's just that piece of the irrigation system isn't going to make it any further. And if we don't have that pump house, we don't have water. So it's just unfortunately, one of those things we got to get done.
If we don't have water, we don't have grass, we don't have grass, we don't have golfers. So I think.
Exactly, it's, it's a bad scenario.
All right, guys, really, really appreciate your, your effort on, on getting this straight. And, and, okay, guys, we got, we got a motion and a second. So Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thank you, thank you, counsel, for that. The last item I have, I just need to see if Ray Clark's on the line. He hasn't had him sign off and then sign back on, hopefully. Ray, are you here? Okay.
I'm on, I'm on the telephone.
Okay, great, thank you, Ray. So the next item, counsel, is a request from the Department of Public Works to forward a letter to Secretary Grumbles of the Merrill Department of the Environment, asking him to assemble a team of key individuals to meet with our staff, subject matter experts on our staff, to, to work through some issues that have surfaced in our ability to move forward on some projects that Ray will briefly brief you on. Ray?
Sure thing. Well, counsel, just to let you know that we did receive a letter, or I received an email from MDE on Monday last week indicating that they are, I guess, pulling back the funds and asking us to reapply for the sewer extensions related to Resolution 235, as well as the Resolutions 250. Basically, we are trying our darndest to get, I guess, Resolution 235 wrapped up. And so we're hoping that this letter, we can, you know, we've got, I think, 11 items, or I'm sorry, 10 items, that we, you know, feel that we, if we can get them wrapped up, we can get sewer started and construction started hopefully by June. But we, you know, we need MDE to help us on that.
I'll make a motion to send a letter to Secretary Grumbles.
DeVio, second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thank you, counsel. The last item I have, under announcements, county offices will be closed Monday, January 18th, 2021, for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Other than that, that completes the county manager report. And it's my honor to serve now as your county manager and complete my first county council meeting. Thank you.
That's great, you did a great job, I'm proud of you. All right, now we are, Mr. Durham, are you, are you on, are you, are you with us? Yep, next, we've got public comment. Do we have any callers on the line?
We have several callers on the line. If any caller wishes to speak, please press the asterisk three on your cell phone, or if you're on the computer, press the raise hand button.
Yep, and can we, and callers, can we, can we have your name? Okay, so.
We do have a caller?
We do have a caller?
Yep.
Hey, caller, could you give us her name and where are you from?
Counsel.
Oh, I think I heard him.
Easton, Maryland.
Good, okay, caller, could you start again, please?
Counsel, this is Clive Ewing from Easton, Maryland.
Okay, Mr. Ewing, yep, yep, go ahead, we can hear you loud and clear. Thank you for calling.
Sure thing. In regards to the Talbot Boys Monument, I appreciate the council's careful consideration and decision to keep and honor the Talbot Boys Monument last year. President Callahan, I appreciate your leadership. As I know folks continue to contact the council on this topic, I think it is important that the citizens of this county to remember the profound sacrifice made by the Talbot Boys in the face of unprecedented federal action, the crushing of so many of our predecessors' constitutional rights, both here in our community, Talbot County, and Maryland at large. In my letters to the council last year, I enumerated many of the reasons I felt the monument needed to stand and remain in the courthouse yard, including to honor these men who rose against unconstitutional actions perpetuated against our citizens by the federal government. In my letters, I further stated, if folks had ideas to build up on the monument, I was certainly interested in hearing them. Certainly, for years, we've heard from many quarters that folks wanted to add context to the monument, or even add a Union soldier to the monument. It just seemed that there was no initiative or private funding to make it happen. And then last year, sadly, these ideas to build up seemed to fall to the side in a year that was 2020 by a few vocal opponents. Optimistically, looking forward to 2021 as a community, I think we are so much better when we build up, not tear down each other, our history, and our monuments. I for one say, let's preserve Talbot history. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ewing, I appreciate you calling. Next caller?
No one else has indicated they wish to speak. If you do want to speak, please press star three on your phone.
Okay, we're going to, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Durham, can we, can we go ahead and keep an open line while the next few minutes we do council comments? And if, please, please indicate if, if somebody pops on for us, okay? All right, council comments. We're going to start off with you, Vice President Lesher.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. First, I wanted to offer my comments to make a first vice president, Laura Price, in chairing the town hall meeting this week with Senator Cardin. She did us proud. And next, with the events of last week, in our nation's capital fresh and raw, we need to find a way both to find reconciliation, to live together in American democracy, and to balance that with a need to find peace and safety. And for that, the vandals and insurrectionists must be brought to justice. And in calling for justice, I will quote in part from the executive order issued by the White House this past June 26th. "The first duty of government is to ensure domestic tranquility and defend the life, property, and rights of its citizens."
and rights of its citizens. Anarchists have sought to impose their ideology on Americans through violence and mob intimidation. They have led riots, killed and assaulted government officers. During the unrest, innocent citizens have also been harmed and killed. These criminal acts are frequently planned and supported by agitators who have traveled across state lines to promote their own violent agenda. These radicals shamelessly attack the legitimacy of our institutions and the very rule of law itself. In the midst of these attacks, members of our government appear to have lost the ability to distinguish between the lawful exercise of rights to free speech and assembly and unvarnished vandalism. They have surrendered to mob rule imperiling community safety, allowing for the wholesale violation of our laws and privileging the violent impulses of the mob over the rights of low-abiding citizens. Some particularly misguided public officials even appear to have accepted the idea that violence can be virtuous and have prevented the police from enforcing the law. It is the policy of the United States to prosecute to the fullest extent permitted under federal law and as appropriate any person or any entity that destroys, damages, vandalizes, or desecrates government property. The desire of the Congress to protect federal property is clearly reflected in Section thirteen sixty-one of Title eighteen United States Code, which authorizes a penalty of up to ten years imprisonment for the willful injury of federal property." There's more to this, but that's the spirit of it. We, we need to, to ensure that what, that the horrors of this past weekend were visited on this nation are not repeated. And likewise, in any state capital, or dare I say it, even in county courthouses. We need to, we need to come together, we need to talk to each other, and we need to stop the violence.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Appreciate that. Kind words. Let's go with Mr. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I will start the MLK Day celebration, which normally takes place at the Eastern High School, I'm sorry, Eastern Middle School, excuse me, which is a day that brings together middle school students from the tri-county area, from Dorchester, Talbot and Carolina County. Unfortunately, would not be held this year due to the coronavirus pandemic, which we all are dealing with. The organizers of the, of the event, this being the fifteenth year of the event, have decided to do a virtual, if you would, MLK Day Classic. We are partnering with the MCT TV, which will be broadcasting the highlights of games in the past. There also will be airing testimonies or comments from different citizens about MLK, Dr. King, his life, his legacy, and we'll be reflecting on some of the current events that have taken place here in our nation. So just wanted to alert all of our listeners that although we will not be with you as we normally would be at the middle school, you can catch us over on Channel ninety-eight here in Eastern. And you'll be able to see clips of games in the past, and you'll be able to hear comments from some of our local sponsors and committee members on Dr. King and current events. I think it was Albert Einstein who said that the world would not be destroyed by those who evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything about it. You know, Hitler didn't come into power in Germany by himself. There were people who, well, his co-conspirators. Stalin didn't come into power in Russia by himself. There were those who conspired with him. And the events that we saw happen on last Thursday did not just materialize out of the ground. There were those persons who watched, stood around and watched, as Albert Einstein said, who watched this decaying of America take place over the months and over the years and did nothing about it. They did not voice opposition to the lies. They did not voice opposition to the distortion of truth. And what we saw on last Thursday probably was, to me, so upsetting. It took me back to the images of nine eleven, quite honestly. To see that type of behavior at the Capitol, to see citizens who were driven and had the intent, I believe that if they would have came upon Speaker Pelosi, they would have done her harm. If they were to come upon the Vice President of the United States, they would have done him harm. One cannot call himself an American and not be moved to his core, to her core by those images. And listen, wrapping yourself in a flag and painting your face red, white and blue does not absolve you of that type of behavior. It does not. Frank Madison Reed, pastor over in Baltimore City, once said years ago, years ago in the sermon, he said, you know, we all sin. It's not about an issue of sin. According to the Bible and the Book of Romans, it says that we all sin, we're far short of the glory of God. He said, what the issue faced in America now is that a failure to distinguish between right and wrong, a failure to distinguish between what is true and what is a lie. And we've come to this point now that he spoke about Reverend Reed several years ago, and Albert Einstein spoke about several decades ago, that we can't distinguish between what is true and what is a lie. And it is so disheartening to me to watch people behave in that manner, to be edgoned on by a president who can't handle the fact that he lost. It's, it's probably was the most, again, the most disturbing images I have seen since nine eleven. And it troubled me quite seriously, and I'm sure it did a number of other people as well. But the truth is what we all should be seeking. And I think that Senator Romney said it probably best on Florida Senate. You know, when you have people who are hurt by a loss, who have put their time and energy and money and invested into a campaign, only to find out at the end of the day that they did not do as well as they expected. Yes, that's difficult. Have you ever been on the losing end of something? It can be very difficult to handle. But don't compound their, their hurt by lying to them, by distorting them. And what Senator Romney was saying is that sometimes the simplest thing to do is just tell them the truth. We fought a hard fight, but we came up short. So, you know, Mr. Callahan and counsel, thank you for forgiving me at a time to just reflect upon that. And, you know, and I'm hoping that we all will do some soul searching in when it comes to how we move issues forward here in Talbot County. Mr. Ewing spoke about, about the topic, the Confederate statue on the courthouse grounds. It needs to go, plain and simple. It needs to go. It doesn't speak to what we are here in Talbot County. It doesn't speak to the people that we are here in Talbot County. You know, it glorifies a culture and a, a time when persons of color were not given equal protection under the law. And quite frankly, we as elected officials should be, should be ashamed to walk past that statue in twenty twenty-one and not do anything about it and knowing how it affects our citizen, especially our citizens of color. So with all due respect to him, it, it, it needs to be placed in another location. If a person wants to go see it, they can go see it, but it shouldn't be on public display on the courthouse grounds. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mrs. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Thank you, Mr. Lesher, for mentioning the town hall yesterday with Senator Carden. That was an honor to be able to moderate the town hall session, which was for all of the Mako members. There were over a hundred people on that call, and we asked him to do that so that he could give us primarily an update on the federal government's COVID nineteen response and how the, the new round of funding, how it would be distributed to the state and the counties. And what we were able to speak to him about was that the larger jurisdictions tend to get the federal money, and that's like more than five hundred thousand people directly. But the smaller counties like Talbot, it has to funnel through the state first, and so that sometimes delays that. So we were able to share our concerns that it would come to the counties. We were also able to clarify that the municipalities aren't the ones, and they get direct funding, like the larger municipalities. And aside from Baltimore City, they're not the ones who are on the ground with our health departments, that is with the counties. So hopefully, he's going to be able to take that information back to, to his fellow senators and congressmen to differentiate and make sure that that money comes more directly to us. So that was, it was, it went on for about an hour. It was very fruitful. He was very on point on the local issues. I was, I was very impressed with, with what he had to say and responding to our questions. And he was very, very well prepared. And in the afternoon, as I mentioned earlier, I led the first legislative committee. We did have to start early. As I said, you know, normally there's about a hundred bills at this point, and now we're at, at nine hundred that were prefiled. We thought maybe this year there would be fewer bills, that maybe people would put some things on the back burner because of the pandemic. That does not seem to be the case. So the Mako staff had to jump right in and, and go through, you know, eight or nine hundred bills in less than a week. And a lot of the bill text wasn't even out there. So, you know, most everybody was, was virtual yesterday. So it's interesting, you know, as I said to Mr. Callahan before the meeting, you know, trying to take a vote of five people is one thing, but trying to take a vote on about thirty-five people is, is quite another. Most of the bills we saw yesterday were kind of leftovers from last year. Either they hadn't passed or because they closed session early, they never got a vote last year. But we will be working very hard every week. We did it on Monday because session opens tomorrow, but we'll be, we're going every Wednesday throughout the, throughout the session. And I will be sure to bring the ones that are of real, real high interest, you know, to the council. Thankfully, we have a very talented Mako staff who goes through every single bill because we certainly don't have, you know, the smaller counties certainly don't have the staff or the resources to go through all of them. So it's a pleasure, and I, I hope that 2021 is far, far better than 2020, and that we can all get much more optimistic about what this year will bring. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. DeVille, we're down to you, my man.
All right. Well, first and foremost, Council President Callahan, I apologize for screwing you up earlier with that third reader when I thought we needed a motion. So I apologize.
Sorry, man. No big deal, man. I'm just glad it wasn't the fourth.
Yeah, yeah. These are all in the room together, and it's just routine, but.
No big deal, buddy. No big deal. We're all drawn to help.
I would also like to just say to this council, I'm proud of the two people that we've selected who were both direct deputies to step up to their new positions with Clay Stamp as our county manager, who was assistant manager before during the COVID pandemic, is now are leading us, as well as Dr. McGuire coming in from being the deputy director at the health department. So we are incredibly fortunate to have two people who were second in line to step up during a pandemic, during an economic collapse almost. I'm afraid to say that, you know, there have been plenty of, as Cassandra was on the call today, there have been plenty of businesses that have opened up during the pandemic, and they don't have the losses to show to get PPE because they don't have, or get the money as of just opening up. So we have two excellent people who have stepped up to lead this pandemic that I greatly appreciate working with. I was speaking with Maria at five forty-five on Friday afternoon, and again, at ten AM Saturday morning. She is, she's on the ball. She knows what she's doing. She's got a great staff behind her, and I wish her all the best support and luck that we can have to get through this. So I'm very glad to be starting off this new year with two people who are stepping into this pandemic to lead, who are coming from the known. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVille. I will piggyback on all council's comments. We couldn't be more blessed with Dr. McGuire and Ken, staff, our own police, our own first responders, EMS. You know, everybody is stepping up and beyond their, their abilities to, to make us in a safe place. And, and I, I can't thank everybody enough for protecting us and showing how hard worker, how, how, how hard a good worker you are. And there's just so many people to thank. I want to thank Clay Stamp, too. He's done a great job preparing me and staff in jumping in this position to take on the county as, as manager. I want to thank you, Clay. We couldn't ask for somebody at, 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 at the, at the, in a pandemic and, you know, with, with throwing a lot of this on your shoulders. You know, you're, 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 you're number one, and you're, I, I can't thank you enough for, for being here and watching your council and, and the community. And we're blessed, we're blessed to have you. Mrs. Price, I want to commend you. I didn't get a chance to see you running the meeting and everything, but Mr. Lesher and, and Clay were on there and said you did an outstanding job for Talbot County. So I'm proud of you for doing that for us and making us look good, you know? I really appreciate it. The last thing is, I really want to thank the NAACP President, Richard Potter. I met him last week. We met for about an hour and a half to two hours, just me and Richard, one-on-one. He couldn't have been nicer. He couldn't have been more respectful. And we got a lot accomplished. We got to know each other. It's, it's, it's a start. I didn't know Richard, and he didn't know me, and I think we walked away knowing each other a little bit more. So that's the beginning of something that I appreciate him coming forward to me and vice versa, me going to him. So that, that's the way that you unite, you look at things different. And I just want to thank you, Richard, for, for setting up that meeting and, you know, getting to know me and, and me getting to know you. So I appreciate that. So all, all that being said, man, we've got positive things coming. We're, we're vaccinating our, our community. And I'm, I'm proud of everybody. So I know that some of these meetings are a little tough. I know we, we all are very passionate on some of the subjects that we're dealing with. But, you know, we, we've got, we've got to make sure we understand we have staff there. We've got to respect staff. They're doing the best they can, and they're working for us, and we're working for the community. And at the end of the day, we're trying to, we're trying to go to the same place. So let's be, let's all be respectful to staff and the community. So being that said, I think we're all done. And my main man and Vice President, Mr. Lesher, could you please read the, the closing statement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at four thirty PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal and personnel matters, as listed on the statement of closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
DeVille, so moved?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan? Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeValeo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thanks a lot, group. I appreciate it. See you soon.